We're gonna go ahead and do the countdown and go ahead and get started. So in five, four.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending this Canby Planning Commission meeting dated June 12th, 2023. We're gonna start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of any messes.
Thank you. Moving on to consent items. We have one consent item for this evening, and that is to approve the draft meeting minutes from April 24th, 2023, planning session. Do I have a motion to adopt the draft minutes from April 24th?
I move to adopt the draft minutes as written for April 24th.
I'll second it.
All right. So we will move, oh, we need a roll call vote, sorry.
Let's do that, and then we'll go back to the new commissioners.
Right after, yeah, I was gonna do that right after. Sorry, I had them reversed.
Yeah, no worries. You're good. Let's do the roll call.
All right, so by roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Ellison, approve or disapprove?
Approve.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Approve.
Approve?
Approve.
Approve?
Approve.
Approved as written. Thank you very much. Next agenda item is welcoming our new, newest commissioners. To my left, Jenny Driscoll, welcome. And to my right, Hannah Ellison, welcome. Thank you for being here. And with the addition of these two commissioners, we now have a complete Planning Commission, first time in a minute, I think, at least since I've been here. So, welcome and thank you for volunteering. Moving on to the next item, citizen input on non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on non-agenda items. Each person will be given three minutes to speak. Staff and the Planning Commission will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizens' input before the meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. You may speak on non-agenda items via Zoom. Okay, and I think that's it. Do we have any non-agenda items that citizens would like to talk about, either on Zoom or in person? Seeing none and none on Zoom, we will move forward to new business, which we have none. So we will move forward to the next item, which is the public hearing. The matter presently before the hearing body requires a public hearing. All interested persons shall be heard on the matter. If you wish to testify on any matter, you are first required to contact the Recording Secretary no later than 3:00 PM on the day of the Planning Commission meeting to request a Zoom invite to the virtual meeting. For longer presentations, proponents and opponents may buy time from one another. In doing so, those either in favor or opposed may allocate their time to a spokesperson who will represent the entire group. You will be limited by time for your presentation. The applicant, I'm sorry, the applicant will have a total of 15 minutes to speak. The proponents will be allowed five minutes each, and the opponents will be allowed five minutes each. The applicant will then have 10 minutes for any rebuttal. All questions must be directed through the chair. Any evidence to be considered must be submitted to the hearing body for public access. All written testimony received both for and against shall be summarized by staff and presented briefly to the hearing body during the staff report. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the applicable review criteria contained in the staff report, the comprehensive plan, or other land use regulations which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by the statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Conflicts of interest. At this time, I would ask that any member of the hearing body who has a conflict of interest, please indicate the nature and extent of that, of the conflict, and whether you intend to participate in or abstain from hearing the present matter. Starting with Commissioner Ellison.
No conflict.
Mr. Hutchinson? No conflicts. Mr. Ewer?
No conflict.
None.
None.
No conflicts.
I'm not sure at what juncture I stated, but I did go through and drive by the location. I know that's a, I can still participate one, but I'm not sure the correct language for.
Okay.
Now y'all know. Sorry.
All right. Yeah, and I've drove by this project as well a couple times.
And I also live on Fourth, and I drive by it every day. So it's on my way to Cuts Force. So that's, that's about all the disclosure I have on that. Expartee contact. Also, if any member of the hearing body has had any expartee contact with anyone prior to this hearing, including a visit to the site, please declare the nature and extent of such contact at this time.
Commissioner Ellison? Commissioner Hudson? No, Hutchinson. Commissioner Ewer?
No contact.
None.
No contact.
No contact.
And I have had no contact. Does any member of the audience have any questions for any commissioner regarding expartee contact or conflict of interest? Seeing none, we will move forward. The public hearing will be conducted as follows. We will start with a staff report and then take questions, if any, by the hearing body or staff. We will then open a public hearing, open the public hearing for testimony. The applicant will speak, then the proponents, then opponents, then any rebuttal. Then we will close the public testimony, take questions, and then discussion by the hearing body. A decision shall be made by the hearing body at the close of the hearing, or the matter will be continued to a date certain in the future. This will be the only notice of that date you will receive. Does anyone have any questions about the procedure of the hearing? Seeing none, we will go ahead and turn it over to Brianna for the staff presentation.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Chair Ellison, hello, Planning Commission, welcome to our new members. Thank you. My name is Brianna. I'm an associate planner with the City of Canby, and tonight before you is the Fourth Avenue Fiveplex. File numbers, DR 23-01 and VAR 23-01. Next, please. Thank you. Could you scoot the viewing windows a little bit? Thank you. That's great. Wonderful.
Thank you.
So we'll start with the existing conditions of the site. The site is addressed 442 northeast Fourth Avenue. The size is .2 acres, that's about 8,700 square feet. It's developed with a detached residential structure built in 1957, and it does have a double frontage off of, excuse me, it is northwest, that's a typo, I knew it. So it's off northwest, and then there is the second frontage off of the alley there. Next. Thank you. Okay. Here is a zoning map of the area. The dark orange is R2, high-density residential. The property is zoned R2, and it is surrounded on three sides by R2. You can also see the red color is our downtown commercial zone. We're in that zone right now. And then you can kind of see up in the corner, as you go north, there is some R1. So you can kind of see the progression of commercial residential to lower-format residential there. So just in general, for the R2 zoning district, multifamily dwellings are permitted outright. The minimum, minimum density in R2 is 14 units per acre, and there is no prescriptive maximum density. So what that means is it is more of a functional maximum density. It's what you can fit on the lot, how you're designing it, essentially. Next. So here is the applicant-provided site plan. I have added the colors here. This is not sort of any official color scheme here. I just made this easier because I know it can be difficult far away or on a large screen. So the yellow is building, the pink is parking, the green is landscaping, and the blue is pedestrian paths, walkways, and patios. Let's just leave this up for one second before moving on. You can see the two units accessed off the alley on the right-hand side of the screen here, and the three units accessed off of Fourth Avenue on the left-hand side of the screen. And that north arrow in the corner there hopefully is helping kind of orient you even more. Okay, thank you. So here are the sections of the Canby Development Code that apply to this project. I will be going through each one of them rather quickly. Again, there will be time for questions at the end. So first is general provisions, off-street parking and loading, R2 high-density residential zone, residential design standards, outdoor lighting standards, access limitations on project density, site and design review, and variances. Next. So in the general provisions section, really what the focus is in that section is the transportation analysis, right? So I have the four sort of overarching points pulled from the transportation analysis letter, first created by an outside consultant that the applicant team hired, and then reviewed and supplemented by DKS, who is contracted through the city. So I'll go over these four points quickly. The trip generation for the project is expected to be three or fewer new peak trips, so that's peak hours, and 27 new daily trips. Northwest Fourth Avenue will maintain a level of traffic volume consistent to local street classifications. Northwest Fourth Avenue is a local street, and that volume is less than or equal to 1,200 daily trips. The access spacing off of North Fourth Avenue complies with the spacing standard for local streets. That's a 10-foot spacing standard, and they have 15, 15 feet, so they do meet that. There are no minimum distances required between driveways along alleys, but there is space between the two. You can see on the site plan, they're kind of on opposite ends of the site. Site distance is a 10-foot clearance triangle, and that is shown on the site plan as well, and it will be verified again before occupancy. And lastly, a site frontage. Improvements to Northwest Fourth Avenue and to the public alley are required. I believe on North Fourth Avenue is pretty much sufficient. I believe a foot needs to be added to the sidewalk, and that's what's going to happen on North Fourth Avenue. Next. So off-street parking, moving to 1610. This is a multifamily dwelling that's proposed here, so the requirement for that is one space per studio or one-bedroom unit. We don't have any of those proposed, and two spaces per two-bedroom or larger unit. So proposed is three, three-bedroom units, and there are two parking spaces provided for each of those units, and two two-bedroom units, and two parking spaces are provided for each of those units. So the number and dimension of all parking stalls meet all applicable standards. Next. Jumping into the high-density residential zone, R2 zone, here are the dimensional standards. Density, minimum lot width, maximum building height, maximum building length, and maximum impervious surface as proposed all meet standard. Again, one thing we do want to double-check at sort of, you know, the pre-construction site plan phase will be double-checking that impervious surface calculation. Next. Moving on, more dimensional standards of the R2 zone are setbacks. So keep in mind, this has a double frontage. So first, we're talking about the frontage along Northwest Fourth. The front yard for that is 20 feet, and they've given that 20 feet. The garage is, there's two, three garages facing North Fourth Avenue, and those need 19 feet, and they've been giving 20 feet. The, so now we're looking at the alley. So now we're going towards the back here. So the alley front yard is also supposed to be 20 feet. And here is where they are requesting the major variance, and they are proposing 15 feet, and we'll discuss that later. But in terms of the alley parking stalls, 24 feet is required there because the alley is of a certain width. I'll dive into that a bit. But so 24 feet is required there, and it has been provided. The, the covered porches sort of facing both frontages only require a 10-foot setback, and they've met that. And then lastly, the interior sides need seven feet, and they've, they've met that. So again, just to summarize, all setbacks have been met except for the alley front yard setback, which we will discuss. Next. So here is a breakdown of the multifamily design menu found in 1621 Residential Design Standards. I do have just a summary here, and you can see, so the requirements for this are total points, you need 60% of all applicable, and 10% of those need to be low-impact development points. And you have to earn at least one point in all sections that do apply to you. And the applicant has achieved all of those objectives here. I'll point out, street and block framework only apply to developments that are eight, acres or large or very large. So they would have like an internal circulation system, and that's really the only place that that would apply. So doesn't apply, no points given, kind of a wash. But so again, you can see here, they have obtained 60% of the total points, and 38% of those points are from low-impact development techniques. Next. Outdoor lighting, this is a residential zone, so it is in the LZ1 lighting zone, and typically a lighting plan would have been included in your packet. The applicant has requested to defer that to site plan stage. So again, before occupancy, before, you know, anyone is on the property using light, we will be seeing a lighting plan. And staff is comfortable with this because only front porch lights are proposed, and that's, you know, a pretty typical residential situation. Next. Okay, so 16.46, access limitations on project density. It's kind of a wordy title, but really there are two aspects here that apply to the project. The first is vision clearance, which we touched on already. It is marked on the site plan for all of the driveways up against the public access way. And so that's the 10-foot triangle required that needs to be, remain clear, so everyone is safe when they're pulling in and out, or when they're walking across the sidewalks there. And then next is the parking stall depth. So we have this special condition where parking can be provided, accessed off of an alley that is 20 feet or less in width. This alley is 20 feet in width, and so that requires the off-street parking stalls to be a depth of 24 feet. That extra space is required for maneuvering, and the applicant has provided turning diagrams showing that that is achievable with that depth. Next. Okay, 1649 is site and design review. This one is a little bit tricky because we are looking at a residential project, so the majority of our design standards are going to be in 1621 Residential Design Standards, right? We have a designated chapter for that. But we do have a few that do also apply to this project, and those are bicycle and pedestrian facilities. The pedestrian facilities, again, were marked in blue on the site plan, the walkways, and bicycle parking has been provided in garage or is proposed to be inside the units. Second in this chapter are landscaping provisions. This section provides more specifications for like type, installation, guidelines, maintenance, you know, things like drip irrigation, size of plants when they need to be planted, how tall they need to be after a certain point. So really, how we handle all those landscaping provisions, we review the landscape plan, and it generally did meet all of these provisions, but in terms of sort of the maintenance and installation strategies there, we condition those typically in projects like these. So all of those are included as conditions of approval. Next. Okay, so now we'll jump into the, the big question, right? The major variance. So a major variance is required to reduce a setback by more than 10%. The applicant has requested to reduce the alley yard setback from 20 feet to 15 feet, which is a 25% reduction. There are six standards and criteria an application must meet to be granted a major variance, and we all recognize that major variances are subject to a discretionary review. Next. Number one. One, two, one, two. Okay. Number one, number two. Okay. All right, number one. Exceptional or extraordinary circumstances apply to the property. I'm going to be pretty brief in my sort of rundown of these six criteria, and I am going to let the applicant heartily support their sort of discretionary take on all of these as well, but I do want to say, all of these do have responses that, you know, staff do generally concur with. We're going to, you know, sort of point out what we're thinking. But again, just very briefly, we're discussing it, and we're relying on the applicants to discuss it as well. So number one, exceptional or extraordinary circumstances apply to the property. So this double-frontage, high-density residential lot is not very common within the city, and where they do exist, they are often underdeveloped with single-family structures. We haven't seen a lot of sort of this redevelopment, this densification in this zone that is meant to be dense. So it is sort of a, you know, an exceptional and unusual circumstance. And the applicant and the property owner, I just want to say, did not create these conditions. They bought the property with the two frontages. Next. Number two is a variance is required in order to assure equal property rights. The applicants provided several examples of this, but again, in the interest of time and the one that we found most impactful was this example that's actually right across the alley from the subject property. You can see the corner outlined in blue there. So this is the same alley, right across the, right across the way is 465 Northwest Fifth Avenue, and you can see it's built four feet to the property line, very, very close. Again, it's in the R2 zone, same zone, similar lot dimensions, and this, this was approved back in 2000. So, you know, and a, a legitimate example of where that setback was encroached, and the city did approve it. That was before all of our time, I will say. But again, it was approved, it was reviewed. Next. Number three is no detriment to intent and purposes of the comprehensive plan or the Development Code. So so far, we've gone through the applicable sections of the Development Code, and we haven't seen any glaring issues there except for this one request for the variance. And speaking more generally, the very recent, and I know you have all heard a lot about it, the Housing Needs Analysis was produced just last year in May 2022, and it found that over 350 additional units of multifamily housing are projected to be needed over the next 20 years. The subject property is zoned R2, where multifamily housing is allowed outright. It's also close to community services, schools, and the downtown core, and really more holistically, when you think about planning and a lot of the intent of our comprehensive plan policies, providing access to these amenities for people living in all types of housing is a fundamental goal that we have. A long-term goal is to provide access to amenities for all sorts of people, all sorts of housing situations. So more access is always good. Next. Number four, granting of the variance will cause no material detriment to properties in the vicinity. So privacy has been expressed as the primary concern here from the public, and I want, again, I'm gonna let the applicant speak to their design and their sort of thought behind it, but the portion of the building proposed to encroach into that alley yard setback consists of covered front porches on the ground floor and bathrooms on the second floor. So in, in, you know, my professional opinion, it is pretty a low-impact elevation, right? Bathrooms are typically areas where people want their privacy, not a high-traffic area where giant bay windows will be, you know, displayed towards the alley. Also, that building that fronts off the alley is 25 feet at its peak, so you can imagine the windows would be, you know, several feet below that, and that is well within the standard height for the zone. And that's 35 feet, so again, they're well below that. Next. Number five is the variance, is the minimum variance, which will alleviate the hardship. Again, gonna let the applicant speak to that more, but a reduction of five feet can reasonably be described as the minimum required in order to provide sort of, we have some conflicting, you know, we have adequate bathroom facilities, important, functional private outdoor space, also important, and we also need to maintain the minimum separation between buildings according to building and fire codes, essential, right? So, you know, there are several factors that were considered in determining what the minimum variance would be to allow this to work. Next. All right, and finally, the conditions of the property that require the variance were not caused by the applicant. So the property owner bought the property in its current configuration with double frontage and the existing structure. The owner and the applicant have not created any new conditions on the property. Next. So now we'll dive into public comment. We received two public comments during the request period for the proposal. We've responded to the comments in depth in the staff report dated June 2nd, 2023, which you've all been provided, and it's available publicly, but we're just going to provide a quick summary here. Good choice. Okay. So first is the density question. The R2 zone, again, has no maximum density and is intended for multifamily development. It's, this property is in the R2 zone, and it's surrounded on three sides by the R2 zone, and then it's surrounded on, you know, the fourth side by commercial. So this is a dense area. So minimum density for the lot would be three units. Again, there's no maximum. Proposal meets the dimensional standards except for the one request for the five-foot reduction to the setback. And just in terms of, you know, producing these housing units, it has been projected, again, that Canby will need over 350 additional multifamily units, specifically multifamily, to meet the 20-year demand. Next. Secondly, privacy, again, completely understandable concern. The considerate design was made to minimize disruption of neighborhood privacy. Both buildings are below the maximum height allowed. The taller building with more units is the one facing Northwest Fourth Avenue, and the windows on the facade that will be, again, encroaching into that alley yard setback are the bathrooms and the front porches. Again, sort of low-interaction privacy elevations. And a concern of people smoking is raised. Staff can't control this factor, but is happy to let the applicant team know that Staff can't control this factor, but is happy to let the applicant team know that, you know, it is a concern. Next. Traffic, we always hear concerns about traffic, of course, understandably, again, but the transportation analysis letter describes how the impacts from proposed development are well below the capacity of the surrounding local streets. Improvements to the alley and to Northwest Fourth Avenue will be required as conditioned by Public Works and Canby Fire. The alley is a public throughway and is considered a street in the Canby Development Code and has existed for this way for over 20 years. Other properties have existing vehicle accesses off of the same alley onto their lots, so this same condition exists along that same alley. Next. And parking. Proposed parking stalls meet the number and dimensions as required by the development code. The parking stalls accessed off of the alley are 24 feet deep to allow for sufficient maneuvering, as discussed. Street parking in this area of Canby is free and open to the public without time restrictions. Staff would like to point out that parking management programs of different types have been brought forth for consideration by city council, and they have chosen to not pursue any such programs at this time. So street parking in Canby Downtown and surrounding areas remains free and available. A 2022 downtown parking inventory shows 700 available on-street parking spaces in the downtown core, again, which is immediately south to the subject property. Next. Safety. Canby Fire Department and Canby Police Department have been provided multiple opportunities to review the proposal. The Fire Department has provided conditions of approval requiring adequate safety infrastructure, including but not limited to repaving, painting, and signage. No parking will be allowed anywhere in the public alley. Only parking on the private property is allowed. All traffic and safety laws will apply to the eventual occupants of the proposed homes as they do to everyone. I am actually on the Traffic Safety Commission, as is Commissioner Driscoll, and, you know, this is definitely a concern, and it is something that we talk about, this sort of enforcement piece versus, you know, how do we build things to sort of allow that, you know, the flow that we want to see? So there is sort of a double-edged coin here, but I can say that sort of on the enforcement piece, both the Traffic Safety Commission, which is citizens, and our police department are very engaged and very active, and, you know, members of the public often do come to the Traffic Safety Commission, so, you know, things are discussed, there is sort of a flow of communication happening, happening here, and we do understand these concerns. Next. We also received our agency comments and conditions of approval from Canby Utility, Direct Link Astound, the Fire Department, and Public Works. All utilities are considered available, and adequate facilities exist to service the proposed project. Next. I wanted to mention, you know, I said a few times, you know, we will verify this sort of at the site plan stage or later on, so I want to assure everyone that any time that I noted we needed to sort of double-check anything for, example, the impervious surface coverage, sort of the landscaping details, I'm just assuring you here that we do have those specific conditions of approval, so we're looking at impervious surface, landscape plan, the tree replacement plan, the bio-retention area, and the lighting plan. And it's not, I mean, it is pretty typical to have these conditions of approval. Again, it is sort of a final check that we as staff just make sure everything is lining up with, you know, what's been reviewed by Planning Commission, but if there are little small tweaks that happen, again, I'm just assuring you, we're taking close looks at that. Next. So finally, staff acknowledged that determining a project's fulfillment of variance criteria is a more subjective exercise than other types of project analysis, but staff has reviewed the applicant's materials and find that the staff, the site and design review and major variance application conform to the applicable criteria and standards to the extent possible. Therefore, staff recommend approval of DR 23-01 and VAR 23-01, it's supposed to be a one, subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report dated June 2, 2023. That is the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Brianna.
Thank you.
Planning, sorry, Planning Commission, questions starting down with Commissioner Driscoll.
So you said that the city considers the alleyway a street for all intents and purposes?
Correct.
But we don't have, okay, I'm just going to leave it at that for now, thank you.
Okay. I can provide a clarifier, because it is not very clear in the actual chapter for transportation, and our definitions of street, it specifically includes alleyways. So we did go back and double-check to make sure that, you know, this alleyway is public, and so it is considered a street.
But its operational width and other functionalities of it are not in alignment with our street criteria.
That's correct. That's correct. Yes, there is no sort of, you know, cross-section for what an alley should look like.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
What about the emergency vehicles if they have to come through there? What's the concern there?
The Fire Department has signed off on the plans, and they will be working with the applicant to make sure that the alley is in a condition where they can access it. So in general, they are confident that they will be able to access it. They're going to paint it red and put up signage, is what Jim Walker described to me as sort of the immediate conditions. But again, they are going to work with the applicant, and the conditions of approval are written as such, if, you know, more improvements are required, they will be done. So us as planning staff, we are mostly relying on CFD, knowing that they've reviewed this and that they, you know, they have their requirements in their own hands, and we're here to help.
We're reserved to write to ask questions later.
Okay, I have a few questions. On, let's see, page three, the project timeline, it says a traffic study was completed in March and supplemented in July. What caused it to need to be supplemented?
So the original traffic scope was done by an outside agency, and DKS reviewed it against our traffic and livability criteria, and they found that some of those criteria weren't adequately answered. So then the applicant actually reached out to DKS directly and hired them to sort of finish out. So they actually provided the supplemental material that was lacking.
Okay, thanks. The next question is on the, the design table, the scoring table, I don't know what you call it, but, and I, I mentioned this earlier, but when I was reviewing the application documents, the table that's used by the applicant varies significantly from the table scoring that is used by the city, and 27% difference, which to me is material. So I'd like to talk about that later when we get to the applicant discussion, but I did have one on the, one of them, just because I was trying to understand the documents and think, oh, did I read something wrong? It said that one of the scores is the screening of the parking and/or loading facilities, and it was scored as partially screened. Is that because of street trees? What's screening it?
It's the garage parking. So the, the cars parked in garages are considered screened.
Okay.
Technically.
Let's see, then I had two more, let's see, 12, page 12, oops. I guess just a question in my mind, has the city done business with this developer before?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay. The only reason I mention it is just in my head, there was a statement on page 12 that several other points awarded must be confirmed during the Type 1 Site Plan Review Process as they're not clearly defined in the current materials, but we've, but it's been awarded because the applicant is confident that they can provide that information, but if we've not business and business with them before, I know that raises a question in my mind is how confident are we? Are we as confident as them?
It was, so my perspective on that, I completely understand what you're saying, is the plans provided were pretty close to showing everything we needed.
Okay.
Right? So it's less about trust in the applicant, and I'm not saying whether we do or don't or, you know, that is what it is, but the plans were close, that we really just needed more detail. We are kind of, you know, in good faith, saying we can see how you're getting there.
Yeah.
You know, if they were 10% off of their impervious surface, this certainly wouldn't be a condition, right? So, you know, we're just, those are just stopping points and double checks.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, just in my mind, if I have not worked with a developer before and they say, I'm confident.
I understand.
I'm like, hmm, okay. And I don't know that, we shouldn't be, I'm just, in my mind, is the question. So the next one, let's see, page 13, I was just, why was the lighting plan deferred? Do we know?
Well, I do know that it is difficult, the lead times for the lighting experts, the engineers that create those lighting plans, the lead times for those, I've heard that they are pretty far out, but also, again, the only lighting proposed here are front porch, single-story lighting.
Not on the applicant's documents, so we'll, we'll talk about that later. But that's why I wondered why. But does that, is that what you were told about why it was deferred, because of the lead times?
That was my understanding.
Okay. Let's see, one more, actually, two more, but they're quick. There's probably something to come up more with the discussion with the developers, but the, it has to do with the variance and the regulations that would cause an undue hardship, and in reading the documents and the design, looking at the design, I was enabled to understand what an undue hardship would be specifically, so that's what I would be looking to get to understand specifically with this application, what's the undue hardship that we, that is a reason for us to approve this?
Understood.
Okay, and one other thing, it's not in the document, but it's probably just something for the group to discuss at some point, but this neighborhood in particular, the city hired a group to do a reconnaissance level survey. You may remember some of that from the Heritage and Landmark Commission work, and so a very detailed inventory reconnaissance level survey done with this whole, that whole area because we knew that, you know, that development was probably going to happen. This, this property, along with others, was coded to the state Historic Preservation Office to ship, was being what they call eligible contributing, with pictures of the, and, you know, description and all that. So the question just is, did we, we want to, we want the city inventory to stay in sync with what the state has, the state Historic Preservation Office. It was a lot of work, a lot of money, so it'd be good if we can keep it in sync. Have we put anything in place yet so that when something is demolished, that there's a, a communication to the state so that we stay in sync? I don't think so, but...
I don't think we have best practices for that, but...
Okay.
We can make that happen.
Okay, it was just a question because I was involved in that.
It's a good point.
That reconnaissance work. Okay, that's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the question I have is somewhat devil's advocate, but if a street's an alley and an alley's a street, and I'm sorry to belabor this point, but I have to make it work in my brain. Let's say the roles were reversed and they wanted that 15, or that setback, major variance on 4th. Would that even be a discussion?
Yes.
It would be a discussion.
Yes, it's the same setback being applied because it's a double frontage. This lot doesn't have a backyard, right? So typically, your frontage would be on Northwest 4th, and then you would have a backyard, but here we're looking at basically two front property lines, so that same setback applies to both of those.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good report.
Thank you.
I enjoyed reading it. On screen 17, can we go back to screen 17? Is that possible? See how good this new system is? There we go. It's like a roulette wheel. One more.
There we go.
So I see the property at 465 Northwest Fifth Avenue. Was there a variance granted on that one?
No.
So they managed to pull it off without the variance?
Correct.
Okay. And do you have any idea in your recollection what the distance is between the edge? Is it 20 feet between the back of the building and the, and the line? Are they like right at it?
You're speaking of this existing building right here?
Yes.
It's four feet.
It's what?
Four feet.
Four feet?
Yes.
Okay.
There's about two feet of gravel.
Can I ask a clarifying question, if you don't mind? So was that garage existing, and then was it updated in 2000? Was it built originally with the house in '47 or whatever it was, and then updated? I was reading those old files that you guys pulled, and I couldn't figure out, was it a new garage or was it...
I do believe it was new.
Okay.
I am not 100% sure on that.
Okay, thanks.
You saw the same records I did, they weren't perfect. Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Ellison?
No questions at this time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lawley?
You might have touched on this, so other than this alleyway, is there other alleyways that turn into roads in the city?
There are.
Did I read that, right? Did I read that in there?
Yes. Yeah, so this alleyway, could we jump back to, I'm going to do it to you again, actually to the very first slide? Let's do that.
And how has that been working in terms of, have they been keeping clear? Have those alleyways kept clear? Have any issues there?
You know, fire and police didn't have any major concerns to report, so that's really who we do rely on for, you know, things like that. So you can see this sort of public alley actually does run west several other blocks, and then below it, not immediately, immediately below it, but you can see several other blocks do have these sort of smaller alleys running through them. It's mostly in sort of the old town area this happens. It's not new subdivisions. We don't, we don't see a lot of alleys in general in our new developments.
Do you see this many requested parking spaces for one project like this in an alleyway?
Oh, well, again, you know, it's not super, you know, we don't see a lot of accesses asked for, requested off of alleyways because this is an infill project, and, you know, right now we're seeing a lot of, you know, green space development, right, along the fringes, subdivisions, things happening. So specifically off an alley, no, but I can say that they are providing sort of the minimum required parking, so if they were providing any less parking access off the alley, they actually wouldn't be meeting that standard. So, you know, again, two sides to the same coin, but...
Please.
So I am not super familiar with all of the alleyway streets in Canby, but I did go through the next couple blocks over to the west, and at least within that section, there aren't any other properties that have a front door.
Facing the alley.
Facing an alley. Do we have other instances of frontages approved in alleys?
Ryan is very eager to answer that question, but just really quickly, I will say that front doors fronting the public accessway is actually a design component that we encourage, so we award points for things like that, but I'll let Ryan speak to that.
Yeah, just a couple blocks west of here, there's two newish projects that each had four units, and both those projects have two units that face the alley and two units that face the, the front street frontage, so there are some similar examples, even if those are more single-family product.
And those are the ones on Third and face the alleyway behind Third?
Right.
Just to speak to a question you had about the alleys remaining clear, from personal experience, I also live off an alley on 4th, further down than Commissioner Ellison, and for the most part, those stay clear. Very few homes on my block at least even use that alley, and the only time I've seen them blocked is when someone's moving and they, they're filling a truck, but other than that, they're free and clear from my, my experience.
Okay.
Does that answer your question? So there are a few.
Yeah.
A few examples, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we carry on? No? All right, we will go ahead and open public hearing for the testimony, and we'll start with the applicant. And speaking on behalf of the applicant, it looks like, if I'm reading this correctly, Troy Brown, did I say it? Trey Brown?
Tracy.
Tracy Brown, got it. My apologies.
I have a presentation as well. Good evening, my name is Tracy Brown.
Good evening.
And tonight we have Derek Raven, who's the applicant, and also Heather Smith, who's the applicant's attorney. So I'll go through my presentation tonight. I don't know if you have a timer.
Yeah, I just started. You have 20 minutes.
Okay.
I can give you five minutes.
I don't want to, I want to go at a reasonable pace, so I'm not like speed-reading through it, but I, you know, let's try to prepare a thoughtful presentation for you. So tonight, yeah, thank you again, I'm here tonight representing the applicant. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, and, you know, we've been working on this project almost two years now and have gotten to this point. We're thankful to be before you tonight. So if you could go to the next slide, please. So as Brianna mentioned, we're requesting a Type III design review to build a five-unit multifamily project, as well as the variance to that section. Next slide. Little bit of overview of, oh, there we go. So we're looking at constructing five multifamily units in two buildings. Building one would be accessed Northwest Fourth, and it'd have three, three-bedroom units. Building two in the back would be accessed by the alley, and those would be two-bedroom units. And each of the, we have a total of 11 parking spaces, two for each of the front units, two for each of the back units, and because this, it's five units, it requires one additional parking space, and that's also in the rear. Next slide, please. You saw this slide in Brianna's presentation. I just wanted to provide the context. This is the R2 zone in yellow there, and we're right next to the commercial zone. Next slide, please. So this is the aerial, similar to Brianna, the site is shown. Just to the east of the site, we have a triplex and a duplex. So there's five units on that lot right there. And then across the alley, we have a duplex. All of those units, the triplex is accessed off of Northwest Fourth, the duplex is off of Fur Street. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, there's required 11 parking spaces, and that's what we provided. Brianna went through and talked about the density, the minimum of three units on this property, and there is no maximum. It's just based on what you can fit on the property and meet the landscaping and purpose service requirements. The maximum building height is 35 feet. Building one, which is in the front, is 32 feet, and Building two is 25 feet. We do exceed the landscaping percentage by 0.8%, and we are requesting the variance to the rear alley setback. Next slide. This shows, this is the utility plan. It shows a little more details about the parking. So we're proposing all onsite stormwater detention and treatment. There will be some rear patios between the buildings. Those parking spaces off the alley, as she mentioned, are required to be 24 feet deep, and we do have a walkway connecting the rear building to the fronts, to the sidewalk on Northwest Fourth. Next slide, please. So these are the building elevations. So this is Building one, which is facing Northwest Fourth. You can see the three garages in front, and then in the rear, the three patio doors, and that's the side elevation of this. So, you know, they've done quite a bit of work, the architect has, and actually, I should mention, Tom Watson, the architect, is virtually here, so if we have any questions for him, we can also ask him that. So they've done a pretty nice job of putting some gingerbread on the property, on the building. Next slide, please. So this is the rear building elevation. This would be facing, the top photo would be facing the alley, and then both the sides are the same. I did wanted to point out, if you look at the floor plan for that second floor, so about half of the bathroom and that stairway, so if you look at the top elevation, those windows with the stone are in the stairway, and those top windows, which are kind of in the center, are of the bathroom. The other windows on either side of the stone are recessed back, actually 25 feet. So as Brianna mentioned, it, you know, has a pretty limited viewing if there's a concern of privacy. So it's really a stairway and a bathroom up on top there. That would be at the 15-foot point. Actually, the bathroom is about 16.5, but that front is 15 feet. Next slide, please. So I just want to show you some pictures. You're probably more familiar with eye. This is looking at the front of the project. Next slide. This is the triplex just next door to this project, so our project is pretty similar to this. Next slide. This is looking down the alley from North Fur. Next slide. And there you can see the duplex on the left and the right of that. This is the backyard currently of the property. Next slide, please. This is looking directly, just turning around and looking at the back alley and the neighbors' fences, so they have privacy slats currently, and that pole in the middle is the dividing line between the two properties. Next slide, please. So this is looking back down the alley toward North Fur. Next slide. And this is looking toward North Elm, and you can see that garage that was mentioned, that's about four feet from the property line at 465 Northwest Fifth. Next slide, please. So went through a code review. The first, as Brianna mentioned, talks about things of traffic, safety, access, and the project complies. The next has to do with all street parking, and as I mentioned, there's two spaces per unit plus one additional spaces, space for a total of 11 spaces, and we comply with that. It is a permitted use, permitted outright, and it's probably the primary use that would be allowed because you really couldn't put a detached product on this and still meet the density requirements. So really, the R2 zone, even though it allows other uses, I don't think you could do that and still meet the minimum density. We are complying with all of those standards except the one variance. For the residential design standards, we do exceed the low-impact development requirements. And one of the questions that came up had to do with some of the differences, and an example of that is the drought-tolerant plants. So instead of going back and changing the landscape plan to show these 51% in drought-tolerant plants, we said, please condition that, and we'll do it in the final landscape plan. So the plan, as it was submitted, was less than 51%. We think we can comply with that standard. Next slide, please. So moving on, has to do with the lighting plan, and again, we probably spent two months trying to get a lighting plan for this, and really, no one wanted to do it because it is such a small project and it really is porch lighting. So we will pursue that as required and conditioned, and what we need is photometric design to make sure that the light isn't trespassing, things like that. But I don't see there to be any problem doing that because all the lighting will be under a covered entryway. The other standards have to do with vision clearance and alley parking. We do meet that standard. The early design had some problems with meeting the alley and parking, and we revised the design to make sure we complied with that. I do want to note that some of those other projects down further in the alley that were talked about as the accessing the alley and then units on the street in front don't have the 24-foot required alley parking. They're only at 20 feet. So there are projects approved that don't comply with that standard, but we're proposing to comply with the standard. Last standard has to do with site and design review, has to do the architecture, landscaping, all of those items, and the project complies with all of these standards. So Canby is somewhat unique. I was the planning director in City of Sandy for 15 years, and I'm familiar with definitions and how those work. And if you look at this first bullet, this Canby code defines highways, roads, lanes, alleys, all as streets. And so I really think that there's a kind of a, and then, so then again, we also have the requirement in the last bullet that talks about parking in alleys need to be 24 feet deep. So I think there's a kind of a disconnect between requiring the building to be 20 feet and requiring the parking to be 24 feet, because typically, that 20 feet of the building is necessary to accommodate the parking in front. So regardless of that, we're working through it. So that's just, I guess, the definition I'm pointing out that's a little bit odd. But the building two, as we're proposing, is 15 feet to the rear alley, and only a portion of the stairway and bathroom is within that setback, as I mentioned. Next slide, please. So I wanted to quickly go through the variance criteria and identify some additional items. So the first has to do with exceptional or extraordinary circumstances, and as was mentioned, you know, it is a small lot. There are minimum density requirements in the R2, and we do have a 20-foot wide alley. The next has to do with variance is necessary to maintain the same property rights as others. As was mentioned, there's other properties that have been allowed to encroach into those setbacks, and an example of that is the garage across the street or across the alley from this property. The next is granting of the variance would not be materially detrimental. It was mentioned, the city does have a need, identified need for more multifamily housing, and so the removal of this single-family dwelling would add four new units to the city's housing stock. And it is very well-suited for this type of use because of its location to the school downtown, and it really is very similar to the project directly next door to the east of this property where there's triplex and a duplex. Granting of the variance would not be detrimental to other properties. You know, as we, as the architect considered the design, he spent a lot of time trying to design this to be as sensitive as possible to the neighborhood. And part of that is the location of where the windows are. Part of it has to do with the design features. It's, you know, some of the design features are above and beyond what the code requires in terms of the look of the building, but we wanted to do a project that, you know, the applicant can be proud of. Architect looked at a lot of those, you know, the variety of materials in that design. So we do have the property, a couple of properties directly across the alley of this. We also have a duplex and a triplex right next door to this property, and we do have the garage that's four feet from the alley in the back. The properties in the back do have a, currently have a six-foot-tall chain link fence installed along that alley, and we saw a picture of that. And as was mentioned, the second story of these rear units will be about 16 feet to the eve, 24, 25 feet to the roof peak, and the code does allow up to 35 foot. So we tried to, you know, make those fit a little bit better in that rear location. The units in front are 32 feet tall. You wouldn't be able to see those from the alley, except over the roof of the other one. We did feel like we've tried to be sensitive to the neighborhood. With the 15-foot setback, the structure will be located about 35 feet from the properties across the alley. So we're looking at 15 feet, the 20-foot alley, so to the property line of those unit or those properties across the alley.
You have about five minutes left.
Okay. It's about 35 feet. The next, we do have a trip generation letter showing that there is, you know, complies with the code, and there's no mitigation warranted. The next has to do with the variance request is the minimum variance will alleviate the hardship, and this is the minimum variance. We did look at, after we became aware of this variance, and this variance, we became aware of this kind of late in the process. So after we became aware of that, we did look at moving the building back slightly. The problem with that is you really reduce that outdoor livable space for the tenants of that down to, right now, it's about six feet total between buildings, and so to go any closer than that would make it really not very functional. And the final criteria has to do with exceptional or unique circumstances. As was mentioned, this is a unique property in that there is an alley, it's a small property. So next slide, please. So a conclusion, you know, we spent a lot of time fine-tuning the proposal. This is a use that's permitted outright in the R2 zone, and it meets the density requirements. It complies with all applicable code standards with the exception of the rear alley setback. The buildings were thoughtfully designed and attractive and comply with the design menu standards and exceed the low-impact development requirements. And the requested variance, we feel is warranted, given the site conditions and constraints, and its approval will result in a better and more functional development design. And we did, we have reviewed all of the recommended conditions of approval and find these to be reasonable and acceptable, including the recommendations from the various utility in Exhibit F, the Public Works Department, and fire. Next slide. So I think at this point, I'll conclude my presentation, and I may come back to this slide as a rebuttal after the public testimony. Do you have any questions for me?
I think we're, so thank you very much. That was a very eloquent presentation. I think what we're going to do is save questions for the end after additional proponents and opponents, and then we'll open up questions, maybe bring you back up if need be, if that's all right with you.
Sure.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next, looks like we have one proponent, Derek, and I'm gonna butcher the last name because it's C-R-A. I can't read the last part. Craven?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tracy spoke for me. I just spelled out a paper.
Gotcha. Okay. So we will then, thanks for that. We'll move into the opponent hearing, portion of the hearing. We have some, let's see, Alexander Hedges? Sir, come on up. And we've got three, I'm sorry, we've got, should have five minutes for opponents.
Thank you, and greetings, members of the Planning Commission. Two points to note after having watched the proceedings thus far. The examples that have been provided of other alley access for multi-unit dwellings were all corner lots, whereas this would have to bypass another plot in order to reach the main street. In addition to that, the size of the lot has been the same since before. The person requesting the variance has purchased it, so why could they not design appropriately to fit within the lot spaces? I've lived in Canby for three years. My wife has been here for more than 25 years. Her family has owned brick-and-mortar businesses here in town. They have donated to local charities, supported community events, and currently serve on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I'm here to express my opposition to the approval of the variance submitted for the multifamily building complex being proposed for 442nd Northwest Fourth Avenue. You will also be hearing from my partner later with the same opposition. Variance is, according to the city's own definition, owing to special and unusual circumstances related to a specific piece of property. The literal interpretation of the regulations would cause an undue or unnecessary hardship, except that no variance shall be granted to allow the use of property for purchases or purposes not authorized within the district in which the proposed use would be located. This granting of the variance does nothing to improve the surrounding property or neighborhood, and we feel that it signals to developers that Canby is a place where rules can be skirted in the name of profit. It would have been very easy to design a space that fit within the size of the lot, which once again has not changed, and that there is, we feel, no need to grant a variance on this front. In addition to that... In addition to that, we find it suspicious that the follow-up to, and forgive me for my notes, that the follow-up to the traffic survey, which was done by DKS, was done in July. The artery for that alleyway goes onto two direct streets in front of schools, and they chose a month when those schools were not in session, which does not paint an accurate picture of the traffic in that neighborhood. In addition to that, the residence in question that is used as an example of a variance, as we have, I believe, learned today, does not have a granted variance. It was simply a structure that was built outside of the standard rules for placing a garage or other building in relation to the street. And it was given a variance after the fact. We also have not seen any proper permitting from the 2000 approval, or at least if we did, I missed it, and my apologies for that if that is the case. I do not believe in that circumstance that using one person's skirting of the codes to allow others to build on top of it is the right way to go about that. I think if there is a variance, it is there for a reason, and that this particular example, nor does the example in 2000 meet the requirements of that variance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other opponents to speak before the Planning Commission, perhaps on Zoom? Okay, it looks like we've got Kate. Kate, can you please give your full name and, and address, please?
Kate Murphy. My address is 490 Northwest Fourth Avenue, Canby.
Thank you. We gotta, if we can, adjust the volume so we can hear you clearly. And we'll go ahead and set the, reset the clock for five minutes.
Can you hear me now?
Give us just one second, Kate. Okay, try again.
Now can you hear me?
Yay, thank you so much. I think it's on our end.
Okay, so I prepared a letter in advance. I believe it is within the staff report also. So I'm not sure if I should go ahead and read that whole thing to you, or if you guys have had a chance to read that. Can somebody speak to that?
Name and address. Her name and address.
Yeah, she needs to state.
I can't see you or hear you.
Yeah, you just have to state your name and address.
Okay, Kate Murphy, 490 Northwest Fourth Avenue.
Yep. Thank you.
And, and she asked whether you read her written comments?
I haven't, I haven't seen the written comment.
Okay, I'll just go ahead and read the letter, then it has the thing.
Okay, thank you.
Dear Canby Planning Commission members, as a nearby property owner, I strongly object to this project as a whole and specifically the number of proposed units as the major variance request. When we bought our home, we were assured that the alley behind our property was a fire lane for emergency access only. I would like to pause there for a second, just to let you guys know that I spoke with Jim Walker from the fire department, and he confirmed that to me, that the alleyway behind is being represented as alley. It's not. It's a fire access lane, which to me is very different. I don't know how city quoting goes on that, but the language is different, and I feel like it's misleading to continue to call it an alley. With young children, safety is a big priority in our family, and knowing that this lane that abuts our property would not have traffic going through regularly was part of our decision-making process on buying this home. Our driveway is directly next to one of the entrances to this fire lane. It feels incredibly violating that our home and property could be changed without our consent. Additionally, this neighborhood has seen an increase in multi-unit housing. Our house is a farmhouse built in 1905, and we have several other beautiful historic homes in the surrounding area, but there's been a rise in these homes, in these homes with historic value being replaced with multi-units. I have lived in Canby most of my life, and I'm invested in this town. It's extremely disheartening to me that the historical integrity and charm of our city is being discarded in order for individuals such as the applicant to profit. The street is already heavily used as parking for current residents and becomes very crowded at school pickup and drop-off times. We also see an additional flood of traffic at events such as baseball games at the neighboring schools or community events at Wake Park. Because of the large number of multi-unit dwellings currently in existence, the street parking in this neighborhood is already at a premium and simply does not have the infrastructure to support five more units. As a community member, my primary concern is safety. The fire lane opens on either side directly into school zones. The area is heavily trafficked by pedestrians. Many of them are children walking independently to and from school, allowing the fire lane to be converted into essentially a road with no traffic parking, because it creates an unsafe situation for walkers who are not expecting cars. We already have problems with drivers ignoring the highly visible school zone speed limit signs. It's a dangerous idea to allow this narrow single lane to function as a road that has no way of being monitored or having speed limits enforced. This fire access is not meant to be a road and should not be used as one. In the initial meeting held on January 20, 2022, we brought up this fact and it was dismissed. I'd like to make it clear that our concerns and objections were not accurately portrayed in the meeting minutes that have been submitted as part of this application. I strongly urge the commission members to reject the current plan proposing five units. The current plan promotes overcrowding of the neighborhood, requires exceptions to be made to the city's own regulations, and necessitates unsafe and unintended use of a fire lane simply to maximize the most profit to be squeezed out of a single lot by someone who does not live here and will not have to bear the consequences. As a neighbor, I am not a complete believer that it is not in the best interest of the surrounding properties nor the community as a whole. We had intended to be in attendance at the May 8th public hearing, but the meeting was postponed and the application was changed. What remains the same is that the applicant, application does not meet the criteria the city has already developed and is asking for exemptions. From what I have seen in the documents, there's no legitimate reason why these exceptions should be considered. The applicant wants the rules changed for his own personal benefit and at the profit, at the cost of the rest of the neighborhood. I implore you to consider the rest of us when you make this decision and limit the applicant to a plan that fits within the current criteria, which would limit the project to be downsized. I just further want to speak to the, the number six of the variance approval criteria, is drawing out some notes, which says something like the conditions of the property used would not be passed by the applicant. This keeps being referred to as a double frontage property, and I'm not sure why. As you can see in the pictures that they submitted, it's, it's a single-family dwelling unit that faces Fourth Avenue, just like all of the other houses on that street. Even the multi-unit dwellings are also all facing Fourth Avenue. Nobody has, it's not a frontage on the back portion. There simply happens to be a fire lane that runs behind the property.
Thank you very much, Kate. I appreciate your comment. Do we have any other opponents? Okay, please come on up.
Have you filled out a comment card? Okay, do you have it? You don't have it?
Please sit down. We'll, yeah.
Yeah, we can get to that.
Okay, yeah. My name is Rosemary Van Der Zandt, and I'm the one that lives on 465 Northwest.
Thank you.
I am not against this building going up. I know that these people have done a lot of work scheduling this facility, this building.
Rosemary, can you hold for just one second? Can we set the clock for her, please, five minutes?
Okay.
Sorry, my apologies.
She answered most of my questions, you know, so I feel better. I had no idea what the plan was on this, so I was worried about privacy and the parking on the alley side. So now that I've seen the plans, they look beautiful and everything, but I also, with Kate, I think that's what her name was, agree that five units on that is, is a lot of units on that one piece of property. Three units facing Fourth would have been fine. And then after I saw the pictures of the, facing the alley, I was thinking of privacy in our backyard, because I wasn't sure on the upper levels, you know, how the windows were gonna, you know, be intruding on our privacy. And we, a couple of us have been there for almost 30 years in that one spot. So it's kind of like, you know, an intrusion on our privacy in the back. And then worrying about the traffic, like she said, with the kids walking back and forth to school. And I know I've been blocked in a couple times, you know, on both sides. So I've had to wait for people to move their vehicles. And especially during baseball and everything, they kind of like, they park their cars and it kind of blocks part of the driveway. So if an emergency vehicle had to get in, I don't think they could get back and forth. And during the parade, there is no, we have to move our car out just in case of emergency, because every time there's a parade, everything gets blocked on both sides there. But otherwise, I just wasn't sure what the, the building was gonna look like. I just was worried about the areas facing the alley, and I didn't think that was necessary. But as long as they keep our privacy in the windows or maybe up high enough so they can't see in our backyard, and I wish there was a non-smoking thing, because that's irritating to the rest of us. And also, what worries me is you rent out these five units, and then you're not there. Who do you contact if we're having problems? Because people don't park cars in their garage. They use them for storage. You can see it all the way around us. And so if we're having a problem with people like the one on the corner, he's got a, he's got a trailer parked, he's got a race car parked, and he's very good. He keeps everything nice and clean. But in the alley, if you start having people parking their boats or their motorhomes or, and their cars, even though he says it's for a certain amount of vehicles, they're there all the time. And so then, I don't know what the traffic thing is gonna be. So that's just my concern. I'm not, I don't want to stop him from building this building. And it looks really nice, but the concern is the backside and the alley. You know, it is a 20-foot alley, but the blacktop is only 15-foot. So there you go. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
And thank you for answering a lot of my questions.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, we have a neither proponent or opponent, Mr. Greg Parker.
Well, hello, good evening.
Good evening.
I thought for once it might be nice to have a neighbor come to you and not say, "Not in my backyard." Literally, this is right across the alley from me. Rosemary's my next-door neighbor, but, but I am right across the street. I've been following the progress of this. I, I think a lot of you remember that for years I've said that Canby needs to densify. We need to do infill. And just because this is in my backyard, that doesn't change my position. The very laws that you folks are working with that come out of Senate Bill 100 that Tom McCall wrote. Tom also said it's land conservation and development. And he used to say, "We can't all live in trees and eat pine cones." This is a perfect place for higher density. It's walking distance to services. It's walking distance to parks. And the only thing I would, I would say is, as you folks proceed on this and other, other applications that come before you on density and infill, is to be discriminating on variances. If the code is old, if we're running into things that are constantly being requested, then tell the council to get to work and amend the code. But part of, part of the trick that you guys have to do is to densify, to follow the rules on, on development while keeping livability, while keeping neighbors like Rosemary happy with their decision. I rent, I can move somewhere else. These folks, they've made this their home. The other thing that was mentioned that Rosemary had about bad behavior of renters goes to something that you folks only have tangential impact on, but certainly you have recommendations. And that is that we do need to have pretty strict code enforcement, that as we get closer and closer together in proximity, we're gonna need to make sure that the rules are followed. And we may need to tighten up some of our codes so that people aren't gonna be frustrated when, when new neighbors move in and misbehave. And I didn't quite follow the Budget Committee meeting last week, but I, I think the proposal was in to turn the code enforcement into a full-time. That's all I had. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. All right, at this time, we're going to give 10 minutes for a rebuttal from the applicant. So would the applicant or the applicant's representative care to join us?
Chair Ellison, did you want to have a chance to ask staff questions as well, or were you gonna defer that to after the rebuttal?
I was gonna defer it till after the
That's fine.
The public.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Again, Tracy Brown and Tyler's. Go ahead, Tyler. Go ahead.
Sure, thank you. It's nice to see you all. For those of you who don't know, I was the chair of the Planning Commission for a long time, a city councillor here in Canby, and it's nice to present. I wanted to commend the staff report as well. One of the things that I always trumpeted when I was the chair of the Planning Commission and on city council is that it's the approval criteria that matter. These decisions have to be based only, and can only be based legally, on the approval criteria. If it is, if it's approved or rejected for something that's not an approval criteria, like somebody's desires, somebody's plan for what they think should happen in the city, and it's not one of the approval criteria, it can get rejected. It can get rejected by the opponents or the opponents very easily. So you have to state to the approval criteria, and that's where the staff report comes in and gives you and points out that all of the approval criteria were met, except for the, the variance. Now, former councillor Parker mentioned, you know, following the law, it is important to follow the law. That's why land use codes have variances in there. There come these unique circumstances in which you have to measure, is this a unique situation? Do we have, you know, how many parcels of land do we have with streets, even though one of the persons says it's a fire lane, well, it's still a street by city codes in the front and the back? You have different setbacks for side yards than you do from front yards than you do from backyards. And so when you technically have two front, street frontages, then you have to say, oh, that's a unique situation. And as staff put together in the report, that creates this weird dichotomy of how do you balance that and that we have in the code. And so I think that's important to keep in perspective as you look at it, because the code does provide how you answer that exact question in staff and the applicant have provided those keys.
Yeah, thank you. So yeah, I'd say a couple other things regarding Mr. Hedges' comments. The traffic, he mentioned something about the traffic was done in July. The traffic study was done based on the, you know, kind of the best practices, and trip generation is based on, you know, they've got these big books that kind of predict what the traffic generation would be. They didn't go out there and count traffic, and that's not required for a project such as this. So it was done in July because that was the time it was done, and it didn't really matter if schools in or out of session, because it was based on the kind of theoretical prediction of what traffic would be. And it didn't, it didn't yield it to the threshold of needing to do a real, full-blown traffic analysis. This was called more of a traffic letter scoping. If you could bring up my slides, I'd appreciate it. Just the last couple of slides. I wanted to go over a couple of comments by Ms. Murphy. You know, and as it was, yeah, maybe I'll start with these first. Yeah, Ms. Van Der Zandt, I think she, you know, she kind of basically said she's not opposed to this. And so my comments were just kind of going through some of the points, counterpoints of what she had identified in her letter. So the loss of privacy, parking in traffic, and the resident smoking, you know, the, you know, really, the, I think the privacy, I think I hopefully explained that, and she understood, looking at the design of the project, that there'd be really minimal impact to her backyard and that privacy that she enjoys in her backyard. If you could go to the next slide, please. Ms. Murphy, you know, again, as I talked about before, a street is a highway, a road, an alley, a lane, all of those things. And so this isn't a, considered a fire lane. The, the fire department The fire department has provided us with comments that, you know, will be no parking. And again, if there is parking within the alley proper, that's blocking, you know, code enforcement or the police will need to be called. And that's just kind of the way it is on any street in the city. Her driveway is next to the alley, she's concerned about increase in multifamily housing. On that point, you know, the zone does allow, in many cases, I think require multifamily on this property, because of the density requirements. And, you know, the safety concerns, I don't think would be any, really any different than, you know, what it is today. Now, there will be some more units, but those units, those cars will need to obey the speed limit, will need to park in the correct place. You know, and I'm confident in working with the developer, that they're wanting to do the right thing on this, and that, you know, he may be willing to share his contact information, I don't know, with neighbors, if there's any problems, he can come out and address those problems. You know, they're pretty hands-on with their projects. So again, all of the reviewing bodies, fire department, Public Works, Traffic Consultant, and the Planning Department are all recommending that this project be approved with conditions that are identified. Mr. Parker, we appreciate his comments. You know, as he mentioned, you know, if the code needs to be amended, maybe that needs to happen. In this case, we feel it is unique, given the location of the alley, and the density that is really required on this property. So again, we're meeting the parking setback standards, and it's really that building, which I don't know if it will have any impact to be five feet further away, or five feet closer, to tell you the truth, because there's no functional difference of that. So I guess with that, that, I don't know if there's any questions by the Planning Commission?
Well, at this point, as long as there's no additional public testimony for the rebuttal, we can open it up, we can go segue right into the Q and A period for the panel--
Okay.
--and you, if that's all right.
Sure.
Can I speak?
Who is it?
Who do we have?
Is it okay, Tom Watten?
He's the architect for the project?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Tom, you got three minutes.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate everything you guys are doing. I don't have anything planned, I've just kind of, I made a few, a couple of notes based on what we're talking about here. You know, this area's been zoned for higher density, and it's, that's part of the neighborhood. And so we're just kind of staying, our attempt was to stay inside of the lines. If we need to go to 20 in the back, then I'll redesign the staircase, and the bathrooms upstairs, and maybe add another parking place or two, to hit the 20 feet. But we're still going to have at least five units on this property, there's no minimum on the units. So I took a lot of effort to fit in with the style of the multifamily units to the east. The, all the windows on the side yards to the east and west, all those are little high windows to bring light in, in the staircases, and in the bathrooms, that are going to have obscured glass in them. So the neighbors to the right and the left, they're not going to have bedrooms looking down on them. Out the back, the bedroom windows that are there are 27 feet back, I believe. So those are unchanged. Whether I move the stairs in the bathroom slightly, those are unchanged. We're trying to fit with the guidelines of the neighborhood, that we purchased into. That's all. We, there was a point where we were talking about getting greedier and adding a couple more units, and it's creatively possible, but that's not, that's not what the owner, the developer wants. He's from the Portland area. I grew up in Canby. Not that it makes a big difference at this point, but I live in the area, and I'm not looking to put something in there that doesn't work out. When there's a baseball game, yes, there's always parking. When school pickups and drop-offs, I live in Westland, we deal with that in our neighborhoods. So, but those aren't, those aren't what's going to dictate a traffic study. As far as boats and things like that being parked in the alleyway, like what was said earlier, it's super simple, there's no off-street, there's no on-street parking in the alleyway. So I, and on another note, there's, the state is forcing us, forcing me to do high-density design, but to be honest with you, I kind of would rather not do. This is not any of that. We can go three-story if we wanted to here, it's 35 feet with a contemporary roofline. And now we're towering in the neighborhood, and we don't want to do that. That's not, that's not our intent. It's, we've been, we've been working on this for three years or so now, it feels like, and everything we want to do is fit into what the city wanted. And when we started this, feels like nobody's still there, but when we started this, the city was excited about it. They were like, "Okay, this is the, this is the density that the state's asking us to do. This is just, this is what we want to see happening in places." It's that, it's that kind of neighborhood, whether you knew that when you purchased or not. I feel like we're putting something out there that is not terribly invasive. There's, across the street is a water tower. Nobody lives in a water tower. So there's parking.
Tom?
We've hit, yes, thank you.
Sorry, well, will you be available for questions? Because we, I didn't mean to cut you off, but the timer's up. However--
Yep.
--we're moving into the Q and A portion for the panel, so if you're available for questions, and councillor has a couple of comments as well, we can start on that.
Thank you for allowing me. Thank you for allowing me.
Yep.
I just wanted to say, I think that if the council, the commission decides to approve it, I think the staff's findings are adequate for purposes of what we would need, and to, you know, approve this case and uphold anything like that. So staff did a good job on the findings.
Thank you. We'll start with our Q and A section, so let's start on the right-hand side here. Commissioner Ellison.
Okay, so, the part that was, I guess I would love further clarification on, it's laid out that the alley is a street, but then it sounds like Kate was told directly by the fire department, it is a fire lane only. That causes a huge, I mean, that's kind of a big deal, because one makes things a little bit different than the other. So I would love clarification on that. And then something else that came up, it was when I was reading one of the many pages provided, it said this is not an infill project, but then it was brought up later that it is an infill project, so I would just love clarification on that as well.
So those are more questions for staff, which is perfectly fine, but right now, we're going to ask questions of the applicant, and then we're going to ask questions of staff. But I've got your notes here, so thank you.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
None right now. Excellent presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I've just got a couple of quick questions. One, are these going to be privately owned, or are they going to be rentals?
They'll be rentals, I assume.
Some of the projects that we've had in that area are privately owned, so I'm just curious as to whether or not they're going to plan to be privately owned or rentals.
They'll be rentals.
They'll be rentals, okay.
And the only way to privately own would be to condominiumize them, and I don't think they're intending to be that.
Okay, well, those stacked units that we talked about earlier are with the facing both ways.
Those are individual ones.
Those are individually owned, so, anyway. Second question I have, in your process with the alley surface and whatnot, is that something you plan on? Are there going to be any upgrades to the surface? Was there any discussion about that?
Yeah, that's a good question. You know, there is a comment from the Public Works Department about providing a full alley improvement. So I did reach out to the Public Works Department, and pretty much the bottom line of what they said is, they need to go out there and look at that.
Right.
You know, I did provide them with some pictures, and they, and then they responded and said, "Well, maybe there's no additional improvement required." So we're, it's a little uncertain, but we'll do whatever they find to be necessary. We, you know, I think the applicant has indicated that they probably intend, right behind the units, to fully pave it, but beyond that, you know, they don't want to be responsible for paving the entire alley, but--
Right.
--they're kind of intending to do that, unless Public Works would prefer they don't. The thing they have to consider when they do pave, is where does that water go?
Right.
So if it, you know, right now, it's a very flat alley, and it's not been designed to be, you know, drainage to the crown, or, you know, to the center, so we don't want to make, we want to make sure we're not dumping water onto somebody else's property. So that is the benefit of that shoulder, that, you know, shoulder that's not paved, any of that water can drain on that. So it's to be determined, but we'll do what the Public Works Department requires.
Okay.
It's kind of long, I'm sorry, I don't want to be that long-winded.
The other, what are the easement situation in that? Is there a lot of easement, storm drains, sewers, water? Does that come in from the, normally it comes in from the front, from the street access? How does that--
You mean for utilities?
Under the alleys, on the north side of the alley.
And you say under the alley? Are you talking specifically on the alley?
Right.
Yeah, we'd have, I don't know if there's any utilities within the alley. We might be able to look at the utility plan.
Okay.
I just don't have that.
I'll ask staff, I'm sure they know.
I can, I can answer that.
Go ahead, Tom.
And I'm so sorry, I don't have a hand-raising option on my phone, so I apologize for that. Everything will be coming off of the, off of fourth. Stormwater will be collected, just like was said earlier, stormwater will be collected onsite and taken care of onsite. So that's, there will be no alleyway, any kind of utilities that are going in that direction. I've met with the fire department twice onsite, and got their approval for access to, you know, they looked at power lines, they looked at everything to make sure that they had the proper access for the alleyway. And as far as the paving goes back there, it sounds like in the proposal that we all heard earlier, that we are required to improve, I believe there's probably four feet between the asphalt and our property line that we're intending to do. Thank you very much, I hope that helps.
Commissioner, your chair, can I answer?
Commissioner Erickson? Please.
Typically, two Public Works would most of the time look at a maximum of a half-street improvement along the frontage of your property. They have to consider things like takings and rough proportionality of how much a developer's impact does in the neighborhood, and they can't make, you've got to repave all the streets in the city because you're putting in a new thing. So they have to analyze that. And so typically, they first probably look to a half-street improvement, if they were going to push up.
Yeah. My question was basically, it was more curiosity than anything, I was just curious as to how many, how much, how much stuff we got running through that alley there. We haven't addressed that in the past. As far as I'm concerned, I don't have any other questions. The, just for the public information, this is, this is very highly on my radar, is our alleyways in Canby. We need to pull these out, we need to codify them in a different situation, and get them, get them cleaned up, so that they're more walkway-friendly, this type of project-friendly and whatnot. So, but it is, it's a housekeeping thing that we need to take care of. And it's high on my, high on my priority list, as far as business that we take care of here. So, other than that, I don't have any other questions.
Very good. Commissioner Giraffes?
I have a few questions. Most of them are surrounding the residential design standards, that's the table with the scoring. And when I compared the table that you submitted to the table that was on the staff report of the criteria, you know, I forget how many total criteria there are, 27% of them are not the same. So your criteria, how it was scored, in 27% of the case, is different. Why is that?
Well, I don't know exactly what you're looking at.
I'll tell you.
I did it a couple different times. And so I just want to make sure you're looking at the most current submittal. As I said, this was a--
And look at what I was provided, so, what we were all provided.
Okay.
So do you not meet with the city and go over the criteria before final submission, to try to align where you can?
No, I mean, we, I mean, what we do is, we fill it out, and we submit it to the city, and they tend to do their analysis, too. And in both cases, I'm not, maybe you can point out one of the examples.
Yeah. But do you not, my question is, did you meet to try to make them align?
No, it's not a typical--
You don't discuss that?
No.
Okay.
It's not--
I thought that's what I understood, it was discussed? No? Okay. All right, so let me just go over them. The first one, on the first page, is parking lot lighting provided. The city said not applicable, I'm assuming because there's no parking lot. And your scoring says parking lot lighting is proposed, and you gave yourself a score for that, but I didn't realize there was parking light, parking lot lighting proposed. I thought it was just on the front door.
This sounds like the old design menu that I did, and there was an updated one, because I, the city sent me there, and I looked at it.
Okay. All right, let me go on then, maybe we'll--
When we initially looked at that, we thought, you know, there is a porch light or a garage light.
Right, that I understand.
It's not a parking lot, but we're really not doing a parking lot, I'd say.
Right. Right. So the one I read from the applicant, the version I had, says parking lot lighting is proposed. So I was looking for a lighting proposal, which we heard it.
Right.
I guess it takes more than two years to get a proposal for lighting, because this application's been in place for two years?
Takes a while.
Two years? Okay. All right, so that's a difference, then. Another one is parking location behind the building is preferred, and so the city said it's in the front, so you get zero points for that. And your document says parking is behind the building, and you scored yourself two points for that? So that's a big difference. Why is that?
There is parking both places.
How do we reconcile that? I mean, when we're given differences like that--
I would say, my conclusion is that, you know, the city's analysis is fine. And our second, you know, the most recent submittal, so again, I'm not sure what you're exactly looking at.
Well, it says if you have front parking, you get zero. If you have side parking, you get one, and if you have behind parking, you get two points. So there's nothing that says both, is that where we have a challenge?
And we came up with the correct number--
Maybe you should have one and a half?
Came up with the correct number of points.
I think the critical thing to keep in mind is that both show that the criteria have been met.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm worried about the 27% difference. That's material, and I'm concerned about the process.
Sure.
Okay. And I heard that, so. Then the next one is the location, oh no, let's see, the number of parking spaces provided, and this one I was really unclear about, so the city said it, the percentage of minimum requirement is 101 to 120%, and that's a score of one. And your proposal says the number of parking spaces provided is 100% for two points.
That's correct.
Which is correct?
Ours is correct.
Okay.
I actually would like, it's a factual clarification.
Okay.
I'm not positive if I'm, but I feel like it is germane right now. So the extra parking space, sort of the 11th parking space we're speaking of, that's not required until you have 10 or more total units on the property. So we're considering that 11th parking space extra.
Okay.
So that's over 100%. That doesn't mean they can't have it. You know, it meets the standards and everything, but it's not required as per our parking minimums.
Right. And that's exactly what the criteria says, the minimum required. So that score is a little lower, because it's more parking?
So they are at the 101 to 150%.
Which is one point?
Yes.
Instead of theirs, which is two. So who's right?
I don't know. We'll defer to her. I read it, I read that section a little bit differently.
Okay.
I read it as if you have--
This is required.
Five or more units, you need one extra space.
Okay.
That's why we added the 11th space.
Okay.
We could take away the 11th space, and then we'll be 100%.
Not funny.
Right?
Okay, let's move on. Trash storage is located-- Okay, let's move on. Trash storage is located away from the adjacent property line. So the city said it's greater than 25 feet, so that's two points. And yours said it's between 11 and 25 feet. So which is it?
Oh, where is it? Could you point it out?
I think I saw it on a drawing.
What was the first part of it?
I'm sorry?
What, I, I missed exactly what you said. Can you repeat what you said?
The, the, the location of trash storage. So the city has it as being more than 25 feet from the adjacent property. And yours says it's between 11 and 25 feet. Now, that's pretty measurable, so which is it?
Well, there's some inside the garages and then the spaces in the back, they would be kind of in, near the front door area.
Okay.
I measured them as, as I measured.
I think that makes sense, that those, that are outside, that don't have garages might be 11 feet, is that what you're saying? Or less than 25?
Between 11 to 25.
Yeah, okay. Let's see, what's the next one? Utilities are screened. And the city says fully screened, and yours says partially screened.
And, and that's another example of one that we, they've conditioned, because we needed that extra point. And so that's probably the reason, the way they answered it that way.
I don't understand that.
So you get an extra point if they're fully screened. And so we've, they were initially partially screened. And so what we'll do is fully screen them and get that extra point. And that would be a condition of approval. Does that, does that make sense?
Was that a condition of approval that was documented? But we don't change the scoring on your staff report to include that condition? The scoring is different.
The scoring was changed to fully screened.
The scoring was changed to reflect that we anticipate it to be fully screened. So on the city-side scoring, we're showing it fully screened.
Oh, I see. Yours is partially screened.
Yeah.
So yours is the one that...
So they're going to show us that before we give them permits.
Okay.
Right.
All right. Let's see, there's a provision, trying to understand what this is, sorry. Looking at my notes. This might be a parking lot, a provision of additional parking lot landscaping percentage of minimum required. And the city said not applicable. And maybe it doesn't matter because the scoring is the same, but you said it's 100%. So is it either applicable or is it not? That, to me, is pretty black and white.
I think that I would defer to the city on that.
Okay.
Lead market is not applicable. Correct?
Correct. And so you're saying, that's okay, it's not applicable. Okay. Let me see if there was any other. Okay. I guess that's good enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Giroux. Commissioner Lewell.
No questions at this point.
Very well. Commissioner Driscoll.
Could we bring up the, the design of it? I was curious about the walkway going from fourth to the buildings in the back that have the frontage on the alleyway?
Do you have a degree in applied presentation or the city? Yeah, go, go for the back.
I really liked Associate Planner Adada's colorful iteration. We've got access to that one.
If you go one slide down, again, you just passed it. So one, maybe one more. So yeah, you can see it, it'd be on the left side of the building, of that front building, from the rear building.
Yeah. So is there any kind of walkway connection for Unit E, Building B in this drawing? I was kind of curious, like when we...
Might defer to the city on that. They, they asked us to remove that.
Does that create an issue with ADA access requirements to not have any kind of walkway or connection?
I think I need to respond that up during staff question.
Okay. And then where was the, where's the trash pickup happening? So, I mean, there might be something within the buildings, but when trash day rolls around and there are trash containers and recycling containers and whatnot, where are they going to go for the building in the back? Are they going to just roll them up to fourth? Or what's the plan for refuse?
I mean, I think that detail will have to be worked out with the garbage hauler and where they want them to be placed, either in the alley. I don't know if they do any other pickups through the alley, or they'll have to bring them out to the street.
Yeah. I think that's worth us understanding what the plan is for that ahead of time.
I don't know if we received any comments from them in the public comment or the, I don't have that with me. It's in your exhibits there.
Oh, there is something in the exhibits about it?
Well, I'm not sure if there are, is there not?
Okay.
We did receive comments, you know, from a lot of the electrical, fire, so on and so forth.
Another utilities.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that something you guys might have information on?
Waste management was sent the materials and requests for comment, and we received nothing back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have something for Tom. As he mentioned earlier, and again, just playing devil's advocate here, if, if there was an option to stay in the footprint and not need a variance, what was the deciding factor to go forward as planned with what we see here? And I'm referring to the comment where you said that you might be able to just move the stairwell back, which would then not, would negate the need for the variance, if I understood your comment correctly.
No, no, and I appreciate that. And this is a completely honest answer. So, and it's in some of the documents that you guys have been provided. Planning members that are no longer part of City of Camby verified and gave us documentation that the rear setback was 15 feet. And so we designed this project with a 15-foot rear setback, staying inside of all the guidelines. Our attempt was not to be here tonight. Our attempt was to stay inside of all the guidelines that City of Camby and Clackamas County puts, puts on us, as well as fires, fire line safety, everyone. And then in the 11th hour, which I will say has not been more than, I, I've been out of this project for a couple of years now, so I'm being brought back into it now that we're where we are today. And so we designed this thing for 15-foot rear setbacks. So our, our intent was, let's, let's just keep it at the 15 and see what, it's not hurting anything. It's an alleyway. It's not a primary street, but it is a street. We felt like we'd, we'd rather stick with this. And so that's, and I'm just, like I said, I'm just being completely honest with you, that's, that's, and we have documentation from, from the previous planner that gave me all the information that I needed to know to design this thing. And I took a lot of care and effort, as you can see, because every inch of this lot, whether it's landscaping, stormwater, parking, we put, we put all that into it. And still having some backyards, still having some privacy with the neighbors on either side, still not being intrusive to the alleyway neighbor across. Again, our, we're 20, we're 24 feet with our bedroom windows to the alleyway. So I've, I've got other crazy designs that, that we can, we can, we can do. And, but we'd, we'd rather not. Again, I don't think this, the developer that's doing this, again, he's a local guy. He's not looking to be greedy. I hear greedy, and this isn't greedy. This is, this is what, this is what's zoned there. And what's zoned there is, there's no limit to how many units we can put on this thing, as long as we can put the pieces of the puzzle together. And that's kind of my job, right? So I don't want to go three stories, because we can. This is, this is a fine example of what everybody, the state is pushing us to do. They're pushing higher density on us in our cities. I, I'll stop talking now, but, but, but the five, the five-foot thing, if, if I have to make it go away, then we may go up another story. And that's not a, that's not a threat. It's just, we're just, we're just trying to, we're just trying to appease to what, what, what the codes are, are giving us. And that's what I thought I was doing until I found out that I was told, again, there's documentation and it's, and it's in the reports, emails that we had 15 feet to work with in the backyard. What's, what's interesting is several jurisdictions that I work with around the Portland metro area, there's zero back, zero alleyway setbacks. There's five-foot setbacks. It's, I mean, 20 feet is pretty unusual for an alleyway setback, but we'll, we'll work with it. If, if this thing fails, then we'll come back with something else. But, but at that point, we don't have to go through planning. It's, it's just going to, it's going to go through the permitting process. So I feel like this is, this is easily the, the best scenario for this lot and for the neighborhood without being intrusive, obstructive, and looking down on, on everybody with another floor. And that, that, those are, those are my two cents. Hopefully that's not too, too long spoken.
Okay, Tom, one more question for you. Go ahead.
I was just curious, that change from 15 to 20, did that have anything to do with the designation of it being frontage versus the rear of the lot? So initially, it was announced that it was considered the rear of the lot, and that's why it was 15. And now it's considered frontage, which is why it's 20. So it all kind of hinges on that. Is it frontage or not? Is it a fire access lane or an alley slash street?
You got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Tom? Nope. Okay. So we do have, I think Kate has a comment. If we take on opponent comments, then we are compelled to then allow another rebuttal, correct? So we'll open it back up to Kate for a comment, a final comment, and then the applicant will have an opportunity for a rebuttal. The comment from, for Kate will be, is it, is it three minutes?
Three.
Okay. Kate, go ahead.
I just have a question on what Tom was just saying. So the original meeting that was supposed to be on May 8, there was also a major variance that had been requested to allow parking stalls to be accessed out the alley with a depth of 18 feet. And that was changed, obviously. That's not what we're talking about tonight. But from what Tom is saying, it was always a factor, this 15-foot. And so I'm, I don't understand the discrepancy there, that they changed things with the parking. And now suddenly we're asking for a new variance that wasn't asked for before. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I just like some clarification there. And he also has mentioned a couple of times, sort of threatened that he could go taller. In the staff report, I did see a max height that was listed. Is that not applicable for this? Because they're within with two feet already of the max height that was listed on the staff report.
Thank you, Kate. If that's all your comments, I'm going to turn it over to the applicant for a rebuttal statement. And they will have three minutes for a rebuttal.
Just really quick, Kate, thank you. And, and there are no threats. Okay. So I'm, what I do for a living, I'm taking the, the codes that I'm given. And people come to me and say, what, what can we do to, to do what the state wants, what the cities are asking for in these higher density areas? There's no threats there. My point is, is we can, we could, we could grow upward. And so it's not a threat, but, but it's, it's where things are going. In some places, you go to Southeast Portland and you see very tall, thin, tiny, you know, structures that are going up in here. Please tell me what your second question was.
The, I believe she was, Kate was referring to the discrepancy between the first variance and the, then the second variance?
Yes. Thank you. So...
Um, excuse me, you didn't answer my first question.
Well, Kate, 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 this isn't, I'm sorry, I got, it's not meant to be a Q and A directly to the applicant. It's more like, as an opponent, you can state your case and then the applicant's given an opportunity to rebuttal. So not necessarily meant for a back and forth dialogue. I apologize. So...
The, the parking, the parking scenario. So, so we started this project probably, I believe, and I can be corrected, but I'm just going to say conservatively, two and a half years ago, maybe three years ago. And at that point, I, my interpretation, and again, it's been that long for me, that our parking requirements were on property 19 feet depth. And so I was, I was, it was brought to my attention in the last probably two months that on, on street, or off-street parking has a 24-foot requirement. It didn't change the design of our homes, the, the buildings that we've, that we've designed. We just had to extend the depth of those parking spaces, and they still fit inside of, inside of the requirements for the city. So I, I've been, I left out of the loop until all of a sudden we were in a Type 2 variance or, or the variance that we're in right now. So we, we extended the parking. It was, the space was already there. We just had to massage impervious landscape. We just, we had to massage that on the lot to, to make those, to make those parking spots work. I, I don't know if that totally answers your question, but it wasn't meant to be anything invasive or, you know, just, we were, we were just trying to stay inside the lines. And the lines, I thought, were 19 feet. And apparently they're 24 feet. I hope that helps.
I'll just clarify on that. Yeah, that's correct. Originally, there was consideration that they, that they were actually 18 feet, drawn, shown as 18 feet. And then we became aware from the city that the alley parking spaces only are needing to be 24 feet. So we revised the design to comply with that.
Very well. Okay, I think at this point, we need to close. The question is, Plankton Director Hardy, do you have any feedback before we do that?
No, other than, has everybody spoken that, yeah?
I don't, I don't see any new questions and certainly no additional receipt, tickets have come in. So I think at this point, then, we're going to close the public Q and A and turn to our work session for our own deliberations.
Do you want to ask staff questions now?
Yes.
Okay.
And is that still the public, is that still open for public comment, though?
Not from the public, but we're going to have a discussion and then...
Right.
That period closes, and then you have a discussion without my further input. So...
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. So then we will turn to questions for staff.
Thank you.
Let's go. Commissioner Ellison, I think you had a, a comment that was directly related to what Brianna was talking about earlier.
My questions are still the same. So if you have, if you can elaborate, that'd be great.
So the discrepancy between a fire lane, a street, and alley, I can't speak to what Jim Walker has, you know, told Kate specifically. I can speak to what we have on record through email. And the applicant has met them onsite several times. And Jim Walker has given permission for it to be an access way for pedestrian, you know, person vehicles as well as a fire lane.
Brianna, could I just add to that briefly?
Can I finish?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Sort of the classification of alley versus street, I definitely agree that that needs further clarification to Commissioner Ewer's point. This actual definition, this is the first time I'm reviewing a project where we have had, you know, this condition, this alley wanting to be accessed through vehicles. So again, looking at that and further pulling out a definition for alley, for fire lane, things like that, definitely should be done. But as it stands right now, as the code reads, that is a public access way as well as a fire lane. The second question about infill is a great question. According to our code, infill is a very specific condition. It is where the boundaries of residential zoning districts meet is basically where it only applies in our current code. The concept... The concept of infill is much more broad, right? We have a lot that has been developed, what, 80 years ago now? It can be used better, right? We have a, you know, higher and better vision for this lot according to our zoning districts and according to our comprehensive plan. That's not just staff. That's not just the applicant. That's our 20-year vision, is a more dense area for this zoning district, for this lot. So that's sort of what infill is in general. And so that's kind of what we were referring to when we say infill. But thank you so much for clarifying, because we do have specific infill criteria that do not apply here. Thank you very much. Tom?
I was just going to add, you pretty much answered it. Just on a kind of the factual basis, this alley is designated as a public street, and it is right-of-way. So that really is the answer in terms of coming back to this. To Commissioner Ewart's question or dialogue on kind of not related to this hearing item, there will be more discussion with council on how those are maintained, funding sources. That's already a topic of discussion right now. Doesn't have anything to do with this hearing tonight. But from a city perspective, it is a city public street, which the city controls, and it is right-of-way.
Thank you for the clarity on that. Commissioner Hutchinson?
None right now, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Delibration, right now, is this what we're at?
This is questions for staff. Public testimony is done, but this is comments for staff.
Oh, no, I'm good.
I just had one question on the process for aligning on the design criteria. What is the process? How did we end up with a 27% difference, I guess?
The applicant submitted their initial scoring, which I believe is what you're referencing. I sent back what I believe the scoring was. We did have a meeting over Zoom, and we went through every category, every point. And we did come to a conclusion. And the scoring, as it is in the staff report, was agreed upon by both parties, and that is what stands currently as the record. So the previous sort of versions from the applicant, we could consider drafts. I understand it's confusing. The criteria in the staff report is the official determination.
Could I add to that briefly? Commissioner Giroux, we are looking at this based on our lens and clear and objective standards. The applicant takes a shot at this. There's not a coordinated effort where they call us up and say, what do you think this is? I mean, there's an opportunity for applicants to do that, but oftentimes, there is disagreement. We are the final say in that, and looking at the criteria and balancing that out. There will be disconnects between those two. They may not always match. But in the end game, it's staff looking at this based on clear and objective standards. It meets the code.
Right. And some of those discrepancies where perhaps we did allow an extra point, the example was brought up, drought-tolerant species. You know, an initial landscape plan showed 51 to 75, or, excuse me, 26 to 51%. And we both agreed, the applicant and staff, say, we are confident that you can change the type of landscaping that you're going to put in and give you that extra point now, but you have to produce a landscape plan showing compliance with that before we sign off on anything. So it is a good faith point, but it is definitely within parameters that we, as staff, are comfortable with.
I guess when I consider the first one we talked about, which was the parking lot lighting?
Yes.
That's pretty black and white. Either it is or it isn't. So what happened?
I scored it as if there's no parking lot lighting. There is only going to be front porch lighting. And that, if you decide to approve the project today, is how it will be moving forward.
No, I'm trying to understand the reconciliation, or how do we end up with two different criteria for something that seems black and white?
I think the definition of parking lot perhaps may have been, you know, misunderstood. You know, you have sort of surface parking. You have two parking spots. We wouldn't consider that a parking lot, a parking lot. City of Camby definition is more than five spaces in a row or in a bank. But, you know, it's not inconceivable that two parking spaces is considered a lot somewhere.
And in the discussion with the applicant, the answer was that it looked like we had the wrong scorecard, like an older version. So is that what happened?
I cannot speak to the applicant's materials. I've given you everything that they've provided.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Loewen?
I go back to this traffic study. Why didn't we do a traffic study when there was school in session, sports in session? I mean, that area is pretty loaded with activities throughout the year. And it would've been interesting to see that. And we're asking for a lot more cars to come in here. And, you know, we're kind of opening up Pandora's Box here with this.
Commissioner Loewen, I would like to answer that. Brianna may have answers as well. DKS, when they do their analysis, they look at a summertime condition without schools in session, so there's a factor involved with that. This has come up in recent discussions with them on other projects. So that same question has come up. So the summertime issue, whether schools in session or not, there's a variable that they use in their traffic studies. Secondly, I wanted to address, the peak hour would be no different in terms of their generation, whether schools in session or not. It meets the standard based on our code in terms of how much is being generated and the impact from that. This is a rather small development. And just on the surface of it, we would not expect that. And it was tested out through the traffic study that there aren't significant enough impacts here that would cause reason for mitigation or denial of this project. I mean, it may be an increase in traffic locally, but, you know, systematically, it's not that much of an increase.
So just in sort of broad terms, we have two levels of traffic analysis, a transportation analysis letter and a transportation impact statement. This project only needed the transportation analysis letter, which is the lower threshold of the two because of the total trips that it will generate based on the ITE, which is the manual that all traffic engineers use. It's a standardized practice. DKS does have a model specific to Camby, given other factors, other local factors. But they did not meet that threshold for that more in-depth analysis. It is possible for bigger projects to have to do more in-depth analysis, such as what you're speaking of, like actual counts, consideration of off-site mitigation. So those things are considered with larger projects. It's just we have an established threshold. I believe it's 150 trips. And that's probably honestly going to change soon with our transportation system update. But again, that's what it's established at, and they did not supersede that threshold. So they don't have to do those more intensive studies.
Then just another part of that. There's layers here, back to the traffic analysis on summer, because you're not going to always be able to do studies in school session. But there's a factor, a percentage factor, that's factored in. And I think, you know, back to that, so it is analyzed. And what Brianna had said is absolutely 100% correct on, you know, there's still an analysis done. Do people want more traffic in their neighborhood? No, they don't. But, you know, is it measurable? Yes. And does it meet the city's criteria? Yes, it does. So that's, I'm just trying to answer that question as it was phrased.
And then one other question. I want to get back to what Kate was asking. You know, if they don't get this variance, can they go higher? And if so, how much higher?
Yes. The building in the rear, I believe, is proposed at 25 feet, and they can go up to 35 feet.
So instead of a kind of tiered situation, you know, the question would become, you know, how dense would this be? But they could go higher, clearly. And you would see this again. It would be through a design review without a variance, but it would be a higher product. So to that extent, staff's not in disagreement with the information that Tom provided. I don't know how dense this would be, because they'd have to recalibrate that issue, but they could go higher.
But they can design and build three stories at 35 feet.
Correct.
Is that it for you? Okay. Commissioner Driscoll?
All right, guys. So what I was really surprised about was Fire signing off on a less-than-21-foot-wide approach. Because from everything I've been involved in with stuff in our neighborhood and in the Traffic Safety Commission, Matt English said nothing less than 21 feet for us to be able to get the ladder truck in. And they needed improved approaches on both sides. So why is something that at max, at 20 feet with existing fences on either side, going to work?
I can't tell you their thought processes. I can tell you, we have written confirmation that they have visited the site, they've reviewed the plans, and they have agreed that it will work. So we are, as staff, really relying on the expertise of Fire and what they are able to do. You know, because we have certain written comments from them, it does give us, you know, a little bit of security in that, at least we have something from them, right? You made the example with waste management. Well, we didn't hear anything back from them, so who knows? But here, Fire did prescribe certain conditions of approval and certain comments. And while those concerns are valid, and I actually shared them even very early in the process, I wanted to double and triple-check. But they did in writing sign off on that and said that they would be able to access that.
Okay. So who is Jim compared to Matt? Like, I'm not super familiar with our Camby Fire Department hierarchy.
Sorry, Brianna. I think Jim has taken over that role that Matt was in. I think Matt's doing other things. Just, you know, kind of philosophically, I mean, Fire's comments are super critical to our process here. I mean, just wanted to state that. And to the point where we're checking and double-checking with them on things that they're discussing with us and wanting to confirm that. So we're not fire experts. We don't claim to be fire experts. We rely on their conditions that come through us. And we put that down, you know, as that issue. So we're relying on Jim to do that. I would say, if anything, our conversations with Fire have only increased. And I would say, you know, in terms of not only the development review side of things, but their place in longer-range discussions for the city has increased as well. So I think that, I feel confident that this answer we got back from Jim is in fact correct, has been vetted through the Fire Department, and is the right answer for this condition based on their review and their expertise.
Now, aside from the Fire concern, with a drive area that limited, has anybody thought about or addressed the traffic being one-way? Because if you have cars coming down from either end, they cannot pass one another. It's not wide enough for that, especially if you've got somebody in a truck. So, I mean, we're basically taking what is functionally an alley slash potential fire access lane and turning it into a road with having frontage of homes and having that be their primary access. So then we're talking about a super, super skinny road. And that gets me pause in concerns. And so I don't know if there's anything you guys can add to that.
So the alley, property line to property line, is 20 feet wide. I'm not saying it's completely paved. I'm not saying it's, you know, easily navigable in all situations. But a local street, single lane, is 10 feet wide. So, you know, by the most squeezed technical definitions, you got two 10-foot lanes. I'm not saying it's operable that way. I'm saying in an emergency situation, could a car kind of pull to the curb or, you know, onto the gravel and let someone else pass? Yes. I'm not saying it's preferable. I'm giving you information.
Sure, yeah. In an emergency versus an everyday, regular occurrence, however many times, as more and more lots try and do the same thing.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. I will also just quickly point out that sort of 11th parallel spot that they've proposed, also another place for, you know, a few feet for passing.
What was the situation with the walkways?
Yes, thank you.
Not going to all of the...
I would like to discuss that. So originally, they did show two walkways from the building in the rear to Northwest Fourth. But they were also showing the 18-foot-deep parking spaces against the alley, right? And so that is where they made up that difference. They needed to go from 18 feet on the private side for a parking stall to 24 feet. So they, you know, they took up six extra feet of pervious surface, right? And so they're allowed a maximum of 70% pervious surface on their lot. In order to extend those parking spaces back into their private property, you know, even more so, no public, you know, onto their private property to 24 feet, they had to remove the pervious surface of the second walkway. And so it was really a balancing act. Our code only requires one pedestrian walkway to the public street. Would I prefer there be a second for the second unit? Absolutely.
Because right now, that unit does not have a walkway, correct?
Does not have a walkway to Fourth Avenue. No, it can access the alley-only pedestrian.
And that's acceptable?
It is for us, according to our development code. Clackamas County actually does ADA review, so that will be reviewed separately by them.
At what point in the process? Permitting?
Before permitting.
Before permitting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Generally, I think because they can access the paved alley, it may be considered okay. But again, I'm not the ADA expert. But according to our code, that's where that difference was. They had to take away the second pedestrian connection in order to provide parking stalls of sufficient depth. And I think overall, the consideration was, what are the neighbors going to be more concerned with? Sufficient area for parking, so we don't have trunks sticking out into the alley, or an internal pedestrian walkway that affects, you know, only their tenants, really. It affects their, you know...
Yeah, it's just that one unit that's going to always have a heck of a time getting their mail.
I understand. I absolutely understand. It's a very technical sort of trade-off they're trying to do with this impervious surface coverage, too.
Now, I saw that Fire said that they wanted all of the addresses to be on Fourth Street, even though there's frontage to the alley. And that is because otherwise, the alley that is kind of not a street but is a street is confusing for people to have addresses on?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, and I believe it's going to be one address in units A through, you know, whatever, one through five.
And then just, I know we don't have great answers on it, but not having answers going into us approving stuff about what's going to happen with the trash is problematic from my perspective. Like, it's really important to know that these people are going to be able to get their stuff picked up, if that is possible in an alley or not. And if it's not having a design that allows for them to actually be able to haul that out to the front and fourth.
I could tell you that for those of us that are further west, they come down the back alley.
Perfect.
But I don't know if they go up the front, you know, on the east side, or the other side of Fourth. So for us, everybody on our block throws them in the back alley.
And they go through there. So that's good to know.
Yeah.
Okay.
As planners, a lot of our job is coordination. So we can only really reach out so many times. But I can guarantee you, we did try. We try every time. You know, I like to be as secure in a report as possible as well, right? I don't want any unknown factors. So I completely understand all your questions right now.
Yeah, and for what it's worth, I didn't get a chance to echo that I thought it was a great report, and I appreciate the work that you guys did, too. Everybody really has clearly put a lot of time and energy into this. So that's all for me. Thank you.
One more thing for Commissioner Loewen.
Back on this road, so did I hear you write that you would go to Public Works to determine if that road needed to be widened on the pavement part?
Fourth Avenue or the alley?
The alley. My concern here is, that's a really, the way you have this designed, because I've driven back there a few times, that is really tight. You're trying to do a lot right there. I see nothing but problems there.
I don't believe there's any discussion on widening. The issue was, does it need to be overlaid? And I believe that was the comment back from the applicant team about looking at this in relationship to Public Works in relationship to Public Works and what they're requiring along there. And that's, I'm not sure how that was codified in the conditions, Brianna, but that's...
We left it vague enough for Public Works to determine that at pre-construction. So, again, before any permits are issued, we go through what's called a pre-construction phase, and we get more technical plans. And one of those will be any off-site improvements that need to happen, and Public Works will determine whether they're sufficient, you know, what needs to be changed. And so, we do have conditions of approval in there that are sort of just loose enough to allow Public Works to sort of do that job at that point instead of trying to guess, you know, what would be the most appropriate condition. But it will be covered before anything actually is built.
Any other questions from Planning Commission? Okay. So, I think at this point now, we are safe to go into our deliberations, and I think it might be good just to kind of take an unofficial tally on where you're leaning so we know how far down the road we need to deliberate, unless anybody wants to do Q and A or deliberate amongst yourselves first saying objection.
I have some things to say.
Go for it.
But I think some things to keep in mind.
All right. So, the density argument is a solid one. We've all been beaten to death about that, and we understand what the problem is, and we understand that there's some things, some heavy lifting to make it work in this town that wasn't set up for density during its initial growth period. We have gone around and around about public streets versus private streets, public alleys versus private alleys, and criteria for all of them. If you go around town, you'll find some actual streets I could think of. I want to say Northwest Ninth, in particular, was obviously an alley at one point, and it was brought into the city at some point with different criteria than we have now. And one of the things when we were discussing, talking about fences and foliage, two things that are very big issues, and we start talking about visibility at corners, and it's like, well, is an alley a street or is it not a street? And when we start talking about, is it a frontage or if it's, is it not a frontage? Well, if it's a frontage, then they shouldn't be building fences right up against it, should they? And so, trying to cram, talking about what you're trying to cram between two fences on an alley is kind of running afoul of some other spots in the code that are maybe not so highly resolved. So, alleys were designed initially for all of the delivery people to run up and down, the delivery people that we don't use anymore. And one of the things that when we started discussing about visibility at the ends of alleys is, what is it used for now? It's pretty much a kid thoroughfare, really, on bikes mainly. Other people will use it as pedestrians, but, you know, not really the place to be looking for privacy, in my opinion, anymore than a front sidewalk. When we're talking about right-of-way, the fire department talks a lot about, yes, can they fit a truck there, but also is the road surface solid enough to hold up the vehicle? And Kibbe has demonstrated that its alleys are indeed strong enough to hold up most of the time, although Public Works will say that you got to be careful where you park a backhoe from time to time, because if you put the feet down, they may just sink into the sand that we have around here. So, when it comes to the variance about running up against the alley, you have to understand that there is a lot of places where we are just choosing to not look at alleys as what they are, and there are other places in the code where we look at them and they, they're a thoroughfare, they're a street, and just deal. My opinion is, is that this was, the design of this building, there's a lot of work in the middle of it, and I don't want to see them cut back the wall five feet because it's going to mess with the bathroom upstairs, and it's really going to destroy some of the symmetry to the space. And I don't think the architectural plan will survive that redesign, which is why they would be bringing up adding another floor and just getting the units that they want to get out of it in defiance of our preferred aesthetics, which is what they are trying to approach with this design. One of the things that we talked about when increasing density is that the way you make things cheaper is you make them simpler, and you make them boring and rectangular, and that's how you can get some affordable housing in. I see this as getting both a nice-looking building and increased density. And so, I think it's something that, when it comes to the variance, you know, I am in favor of being for the variance, and I have to bring up Mr. Parker's point of view, and it's something that I discussed with Commissioner Trundy when she was a member of this board, is that we're better off with things that are code than having them come to us for special permission just because it kind of opens the door to discrimination. You like this person, you didn't like that guy's hair, you know, you grant a variance here and you don't there, and it's, it's, it's just, it seems messy looking at it from a distance. And so, I tend to agree with his point of view. But my goodness, you want to start talking about a tangled web, start talking about what we're going to turn the alleys into, and it might just be easier to not crack that can open. I mean, we certainly don't have time to do it tonight, because we've eaten up several meetings, several work sessions, talking about fences and foliage and alleys and streets. So, all of that, my intention is to vote for this, and I think it is exactly what we're looking for.
Thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson. Any other comments?
I just, I want to talk about density also. I'm very pro-density, by the way. And we've been studying and studying. We had great information provided by Don and his staff to understand our density requirements, and we're all, you know, wrapping our heads around how to fit that in. My biggest concern about this is, we're still getting comments from citizens that says this is too much, and that neighborhood, you ain't seen nothing yet. And I don't mean that negatively. I mean, get with the program, folks. These are our two lots. They're all going to be built. They're going to be built out. The state is requiring it. So, I'm worried about getting the word out so we, so people don't, aren't so upset just by the fact that this is, these are going to be dense. I mean, there's going to be a lot of multi-unit, units, you know, multi-unit builds in that area. And so, how do we get the word out so folks understand that? Because it sounds like there's still a gap, a communication gap somewhere. And my, my only thing about the variance is that some of what's been discussed has been saying, you know, well, it's about the same property rights based on something that was approved for a garage more than 20 years ago, and I'm not, I'm not really about perpetuating what might have been an error. Or, you know, it's sad that if there was, you know, something that was proposed that had a 15-foot setback, and then that wasn't noticed initially, and that was another error, maybe, apparently from what we're hearing, are we going to perpetuate that by approving it because somebody made an error? Or do we change the living room versus the bathroom? Do we change the size of the living room? I don't know. But it seems like perpetuating errors isn't the way I'd want to think about approving a variance. So, that's just my opinion.
Very well. Any other thoughts, comments? Commissioner Driscoll.
So, I really like the design and the aesthetics of it. I appreciate that it's not three stories, having three stories towering over one-story buildings. They're not as small in that neighborhood as they are in some other ones, but it's still, three stories are the one that get me. The parking is respectable for that area, because Fourth is actually fairly wide, does still currently have some street parking, and the building in the back has a decent amount for what it is. My fear and concern is that we don't have a clear definition of, is it a fire access lane? Is it an alley? And what's frontage and what is not frontage? Because we're kind of opening up Pandora's box in the slippery slope of, we're basically agreeing that an alleyway, the back of an alleyway, in the back of a lot into an alleyway is now street frontage for anything else that wants to be built and anything else that's going to require parking. And that's my concern with approving it. It's not that I have a problem with the project in and of itself or the design of it, because, you know, five units, it's only two stories high, it's actually aesthetically pleasing. Like, I don't have any moral qualms with any of that, but the getting, you know, establishing that as precedence when there's so many open, important questions that haven't been resolved, I'd be more inclined to say that we need to kind of have a continuance of sort, to pause it, kick it down the road a smidge, and get some clarification about what's a fire access, what's an alley, and what is frontage? Because if we're making the decision based on what we know today, I think we're asking for more trouble later. But I don't think it should be denied necessarily because it is a good plan, and I wouldn't want to not let it stand as is if it's reasonably possible to do so.
Don, do you want to weigh in on that process? Because I think that process would just go...
I think maybe...
For the sake of this project, to leave them in the balance?
The challenge, I don't think we'll come back with answers that we are not giving you tonight. I think we're going to come back with the same answer, saying it is a city street, and it is right-of-way. I mean, I think if anything, the applicants are here for the variance, and just to talk briefly about that for a moment, there's this weird code provision that we did, you know, historically probably have, you know, not looked at, that is fine of detail, but the fact of the matter is, it is something, and they're meeting all of the parking standards clearly away from the alley. They're meeting the standard, you know, for parking completely. So, I think that resolves any concern with that issue. If anything, you know, I have a tendency to agree with the applicant that the standard actually is greater off of the alley than the front of the house off of Fourth. I mean, I know there's two fronts, but like, if you have 20 feet, and that's all we're requiring, and that's what a driveway is, and when now we're requiring 24 feet on the backside off the alley, that seems in many ways to already overcompensate for that situation. You know, if anything, that probably is something we need to look at in the code, and I'm not just in disagreement with the applicants on that behalf. So, from a circulatory perspective, I don't think there's going to be anything else that we find by doing a continuance for this item. I think fire has clearly weighed in on this, and I don't think they're going to come back with anything different. So, that's my perspective on it.
Who makes the designation between fire access or alley? Like, is that coming from fire? Is that Public Works? Who would say this is actually one of the other?
Ultimately, you know, the city has control of all the streets. Fire is a commenter. They're a district. They're not part of the city. We treat them as if they're part of the city, and they comment, and we put them in conditions of approval. Ultimately, the city has control over the situation. It's Public Works's call on this, and they're also acceptable. This is acceptable to them as well. So, ultimately, it's Public Works' decision, which is part of the city, it can be.
Okay.
There's an issue with 150 feet of hose and getting the truck to that point, and we've run into that with code before and with some flag lots that have made that complicated and have had to drill down a little bit, but it's, yeah.
Well, that was something else that I saw in the plan. So, from the southeast and southwest corners of Fourth, or, you know, from Fur and, oh, crud, what's the elm? Between Fur and Elm, they've got hydrants that are 116 feet to the front of the north or south, or, I'm saying all the directions and not being clear at all. If we're looking at the Fourth Street side of the building, one side, it's 155 feet from a hydrant, and one side is 116 from a hydrant. And then, we have to add another 115 feet just to get to the ones in the back, and that's not to get all the way around it. And so, I mean, fire signed off on it, but that seems like a heck of a lot of distance for a hose. And so, again, it's like, not only just this one, can they get enough hose around? If they can get the truck there, great. Where do they hook up to it? And then, every other property down the road that would end up doing the same thing, because like you said, that whole area, it's going to want to do the infill, and it'll be a lot more of this. This project just continues all that on. So, all of our open questions make it so that we're basically agreeing to turn every lot in that area into the same thing, the same amount of parking and the same questionable water access or fire access.
I think that sounds like, I would almost say, to kind of echo what Brianna had said, is fire is taking a look at it.
They say that, fine. Okay, well, then I...
And that's, and that's fine. No, I'm glad you're asking the question, but for us as a body, I would defer to them, too. If they have to fight the fire and them running into the building, what are they going to have to deal with? They don't want to do any further distance than they absolutely have to. I know that, at least from my sister-in-law, but...
I just want to make a general observation. Sometimes during, so, pre-construction happens after land use review, right? Sometimes fire will say, actually, we would like to see sprinklers. So, they do definitely have another chance at a holistic review at this, and they will make it safe. You know, we do have a lot of confidence in that, and I do understand your concerns. I just want to reiterate that. But again, there are other options that they can consider.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Ewer.
So, good project. I think we were reminded earlier that we need to talk about this on the criteria, okay? As far as I'm concerned, the project meets the criteria. The only reason that we have to discuss variances, there's two reasons. One is, is you have somebody, an applicant, that's trying to get by something that they're not supposed to do, or we're not sure of our present code and rules. And the whole alley thing is another can of worms, as it was so aptly put. But as far as the criteria, I think the project meets the criteria. It's a good-looking project. I'm glad we're not going three stories. I would probably caution the comments that were from the architect. It did sound like a threat to me that if we don't get the variance, we're going to go three stories. From just a personal standpoint of sitting on the board, I didn't appreciate that, but that's neither here nor there. We've got a good project before us. I think that it, as it was said, this area, if we can get projects like this to infill, whether you want to call it infill or whatever you want to call it, I think that this is going to be a, an area that's going to happen, or something is going to happen in this area. As far as the fire access lane that was brought up by one of the, one of the folks, I think Ms. Murphy, again, that's something that we need to talk about. Safety in the school zone, name me a school zone in Kibbe that doesn't have a safety issue. I mean, you go to Eccles on Cedar, and that thing is wide enough to turn a semi-truck around, and the cars are stacked up for blocks waiting to pick up their kids. So, I get that. You know, I would like to see us probably work with. Rosemary said that, like, when we have our general Kibbe days and whatnot, maybe Public Works could do something with coning driveways so the parking issue is not so much. When I first moved to this town, you went down at nine o'clock, the parade started at 9:30, and you put your lawn chair out. Now, I got to put my lawn chair out at 5:30 in the morning if I want to get it. So, we, there's definitely a thing there. But it's Kibbe. We're growing, and all we can do is grow as safely and as comfortably as we can. The, Mr. Hedges brought up the fact that we're setting precedent. Yeah, we are, but the precedence is set because we don't have a clear-cut picture of what our alleys are and what they're supposed to be. It's like Mr. Hutchinson said, alleys were made for delivery purposes back in the day, and they're not that anymore. And so, now, we need to come up with what's our definition for alleys. So, but that's not something we're going to do on these folks' nickel. So, as far as I'm concerned, does it meet the, does it meet the criteria laid before us? I believe it does, and I think it's a good-looking project. And like I said, if we can get projects like this infilling in these areas of town, I think that we could count ourselves lucky. So, those are my comments. Oh, and by the way, the other comments were made that Portland does this and Portland does that. We're not Portland. I just want to toss that out there, too.
Okay, any final comments? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve, I'm sorry, to, what is the right word?
Entertain.
Just entertain a motion to vote on the application for DR 23-01 slash VAR 23-01.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve DR 2301 and variance, what's the number on the variance? I didn't write it down.
23-01.
23-01 as submitted. My recommendation for approval would, and correct me if I have this, hopefully I have this right, that we would, I would like to see a condition that there be no parking in the alley by the residents of this project. I'd also like to see a condition, if we don't have it in there yet, that the city works talk with them about the alley improvements as far as the surface and...
That is in there.
Okay, very good. And then, I'd also like to see a condition of approval that the mechanical systems are fully screened. We had discussion about that. So, I would move that we approve with the commission's conditions submitted by staff plus these commission conditions. plus these conditions. That's my motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Very well. We're going to do a roll call vote, so starting at this end of the, oh, go ahead.
So the parking in the alley, isn't that prohibited already because it's a right-of-way?
Yes.
So I don't know why we would need to add that.
Okay.
You can't strip a car there, you can't pitch a tent there, you can't park that.
Add signage?
I was kind of with, you know, I thought there was something about adding the signage.
There's, yeah, according to Public Works and the Fire Department, it's at their discretion what the signage is. I mean, we could clarify that we want signage saying no parking, but again, to Commissioner Hutchinson's point, operationally, there's not.
Okay, I'll amend my motion then to strike that condition as far as no parking in the alley.
But the mechanical screening.
Yeah.
I'll still second it.
Still seconding. Okay, very well. All right, roll call vote. We are going to start with Commissioner Ellison.
I approve it.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
I approve.
Commissioner Ewer.
Approve.
Commissioner Drush.
I don't approve.
Commissioner Luhelli.
I approve.
Commissioner Driscoll.
I approve.
And I approve. The vote is six to one to approve the project DR 23-01 slash VAR 23-01. Major variance approved. Project approved. We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you.
Can we take a break?
We are going to take a fi, I'm sorry, a 10-minute break. So if we could get Gordon to go ahead and drop that microphone feed, please. Welcome back.
Recording in progress.
Welcome back to Planning Commission. We're going to move into our Planning Commission work session. Planning Director Hardy, please lead us off into the next subject matter.
Thank you, Chair Ellison and Commissioners. We're going to continue our discussions on housing code efficiency measures. I have Reed Stapleton here with Dell. He'll be making a presentation. I just wanted to make some commentary remarks. First of all, don't take a gasp when you see it's 44 slides. We will be going through this rather quickly tonight. That's the first thing, so I'm not going to put you to sleep. And so, but we think the information, most of them are pictures, they're not text. So Reed was like, I think maybe we should scale it back, and I said, no, I think the content's important, but we'll go through it quickly. And he said he'd become the auctioneer tonight, so.
Awesome. He can be the legal disclaimer on those infomercials. That would be fantastic.
So we'll go through a pretty good clip. Tonight, really trying to high level here, knowing that we're going to have a July 24th Planning Commission work session again. Tonight, I really want to get your input, to listen through this whole process. We'll have some moments of comment. I'd like to do this in segments. We're going to talk about cottage developments, planning and developments, and commercial zones where we would allow residential development, specifically targeted areas along the south side of 99E, directly adjacent to 99E. Those are infill examples. They're, the one piece that we are not covering, and I'm actually glad because we don't have a lot of time, but we'll have more information about this. Commissioner Ewer, you asked specifically about infill and specifically in the R1 zone, and how much could be accommodated potentially in infill in R1. That will be described on July 24th. We'll have information. We're going to have a sample area, and we're going to go through our current code and explain what that, some case studies based on our current code. I think some of that discussion will be, is our current code sufficient, or should there be other incentives? That's not something people have really taken much advantage of, and our current code is actually quite liberal in that way. So we'll talk more about that on the 24th of July. It's a good conversation. It allows us to have some conversations about single-family residential. Currently, you're allowed to have two homes on a lot if you meet the standards in our code, and that's House built 2001. And also, you could have an accessory dwelling unit in a single-family home or two homes on one lot. We only get a few of these a year throughout the entire city, one or two a year. This is not, even though it's allowed, we don't get a lot, but there'll be more discussion around that. So with that, I think I'm just going to turn it over to Reed. This is a continuation for Commissioner Driscoll and Ellison, as they're new. We had a discussion previously on this, and this is a continuation of it. Kind of maybe the broad brush focus here is, the focus tonight is on homeownership, single-family detached homeownership and different configurations. So smaller houses on smaller lots, not tiny homes, but dealing with cottage developments and helping us with our code development. After we go through the July 24th, we're going to start developing code, but what should a cottage development, what are the amenities that should be part of that? We're dealing with concepts here that are kind of broad, but you're going to get examples of what those look like. There's some commonalities sometimes. There's common open space of these. Sometimes there's trails, there's open space. Cottage developments are usually a smaller-scale aspect. Planning unit developments are much larger. They're like a master plan. But you're going to see a combination of these, where you have a planning unit development, and within the planning unit development, there's a cottage development, and we have examples of that tonight as well. So these are examples in Oregon. I think they're good. Don't be blown away by the price point. These are more affordable houses, and you might say, gold, like, these are really expensive. Well, yeah, compared, you know, they're cheap compared to your traditional homes. So that is the goal here, is to provide more affordability. These efficiency measures as a broad brush, what we have done is we've gone through a housing needs analysis, housing production strategy. The housing needs analysis has identified a deficit between 50 and 112 acres of land within the city, meaning that would be needed to have as an urban growth boundary expansion. These efficiency measures, per the state requirements, are required for us to have efficiency measures which would maximize our ability to have, to lessen that number potentially, but to say that we've actually gone through and looked at opportunities to have more housing options in the city by implementing code. That goes hand in hand with the urban growth boundary expansion, and it's required as part of that process. At the end, I'll give an update as to some other things on the comp plan and the involvement of the Planning Commission and what's coming up next. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Reed, but yeah, feel free, I want, this should be interactive. We are looking for your ideas and comments so we can get back to you on the 24th of July. So with that, Reed, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thanks, Don. And thank you, Commissioners. I know it's been a long evening, so I appreciate you sticking with us here and try not to bore you to death here. So, yeah, I appreciate it. So at the last work session, we talked a little bit about examples of cottage clusters and really focused on different product types that are out there. We're viewing this work process as really kind of peeling back the layers of the onion, understanding the product types, understanding the dimensional aspects of those product types, and then, you know, beginning to kind of frame up in a closer, from a closer perspective, how do those marry up against your current code framework so that we can then begin to identify, okay, here are some tweaks that we foresee being necessary in your code to accommodate, to accommodate this, to get to the efficiency measures that Don spoke to. So we're kind of in the middle process of that evaluation work program for ourselves. So we do have a few more case studies that we want to share with you, and we have also begun to take a step looking into the code and looking into where some of those potential code conflicts exist. And at our next hearing on July 24th, I think, we're going to have a little bit more of a specific idea of, okay, here are specifically some ideas of where in your code we could foresee making some changes, and then that will conclude our current work program, and then soon after, we would anticipate that the city would launch into, you know, the actual code update, weighing pros and cons of really some specific language modifications. So just to give you a kind of general sense of where we are in the process. So, next slide, please. So for tonight's meeting, we want to review. So, for tonight's meeting, we wanna review some additional examples of cottage clusters, and also some examples of PUDs. We wanna look at how, and we wanna discuss how the Canby's code currently addresses these, and some potential areas of adjustment that might be considered, as well as potential modifications within the PUD code framework that might be on the table if we're looking to accommodate these. And then, to Don's point about commercial areas along Highway 99E, we've done a look at that as well to see where within the C1 and C2 code framework might there be an opportunity for, to introduce residential, or at least try to entice residential where it hasn't occurred to date. Next slide, Laney, please. So, we've surveyed the landscape and have some additional case studies that we wanted to introduce. The ones on the left are the ones that we shared with you all at the last meeting. We have an additional five case studies that we wanted to run through briefly. Next slide, please, Laney. And this is just a quick snapshot of those previous examples that we walked through at the last work session. Next slide, please, Laney. So, first up of our case studies is a cottage concept in Clackamas County. It involves, there are 18 units over three and a half acres. Those units are cottages that range between 800 and 1800 square feet. This is actually a senior living or age-restricted development, so there's kind of a unique sort of business. Yes, yeah, yeah. So, you know, the financial aspects of it are fairly unique because of that. But from a built, you know, a built orientation framework, it does follow some of those concepts of cottage clusters having open spaces that tether together the units and a walkable, kind of pedestrian-oriented environment. Yeah, it's a really good point. Yeah, and I don't have, I haven't looked at the actual building program, so I assume it is multi-level, and that's a really good point. That's something we can look into. Yeah, yeah, great observation. Next slide, please. And this is just an aerial perspective and another image identifying how those buildings orient. Next slide, please, Laney. And this is the general, these are the general characteristics of the project. And, you know, I think, I think these slides will all be available. And I was telling Don, we can very easily compile the previous list with this list, so you guys have a nice packet of material that you can scan at your leisure. And then, you know, as I mentioned, the financial program for this is a little unique because of that assisted living, or not assisted living, but age-restricted component to it. So, it is a, from what I understand, there's a graduated care facility available. And so, I think that the program allows for owners to evolve into a more, more, you know, acute care kind of, yeah, environment within that, within that area. Next slide, please, Laney. So, Verde Village is a project in Ashland, and kind of a unique setup where you can see that, on the image to the, to the right, you have a series of essentially community carports that provide, you know, covered access. And then, you have units that sit up above them, I think probably in Ashland, where you don't see quite as much rain as you do here. That type of orientation may work a little bit better, where you don't have people having to walk through the rain to get to their unit. But it is a pretty creative use of space and the use of the lot orientation. In this project, there were 24 units, small lot detached and cottage clusters. Those units ranged between 1,000 and 2,000 square feet. Project was built in 2017. It was within a single-family residential zone of R3.5. Next slide, please, Laney. Just another image of the homes within the project. Next slide, please, Laney. And then again, these are the, just the general aspects of the project. And you can see at 24 units over 2.5-ish acres, the residential yield was about nine units to the acre. And, you know, that's, what we're seeing amongst a lot of these case studies is a density in about that range, that nine units to the acre range. And then, bottom right here, you can see the price point, which came in between $300,000 and $500,000 for these units. Next slide, please, Laney. So, another example are these, what were called Teahouse cottages in Monmouth. And it's, they're located within the Edwards Edition, which is a PUD that was started in the early 2000s, but it's been around now for about 20 years. The Teahouse cottages were done a little bit more recently, about seven years ago in 2016. Next slide, please, Laney. And it's a little bit difficult to see, but from the aerial photo on the left, you can see where those, where those situate within the project. And, next slide, please, Laney. And in this case, the, there were five units over about a half acre. Those units ranged between 1,100 and 1,800 square feet. So, we were looking at about 10 units to the acre in this example. It was in a mixed-density residential zone, but was actually developed through a PUD was the ultimate entitlement vehicle for the project. 1,100 to 1,800 square feet.
So, it's not the 3,000?
No, I think the 3,000 is the master lot of, yeah. Yeah, 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 exactly, yeah. I'd be looking, I'd be looking for that, yeah. Okay, next slide, please, Laney. Another example is the Green Grove Cohousing Project in Forest Grove. This one involved nine detached units over about five acres, but the vast majority of that site was reserved in a common open space. So, about four acres are in open space. Their residual areas all where the lots are generally consolidated. The homes range from about 900 square feet, so small, to 1,400 square feet, still fairly small, but, so they're, you know, smaller, smaller homes. Next slide, please, Laney. And the aerial doesn't probably, probably do it justice, but this is a general idea of the orientation. And again, in this instance, there was a common carport garage. You can see off to the right for those homes. And then, folks could park in those, in that carport, and then reach their unit either through a drive aisle in the back or through the walkway in the, in the front area. Next slide, please. So, this has a few more details about the project. The sale price was about $450,000. And again, when you look at at least the area where the development was, we were about nine and a half, they were about nine and a half, or nine units to the acre on their density. So, common thread amongst a lot of these is landing in that kinda nine to 10 units per acre for these cottage clusters. Yeah, my understanding of this is that it's essentially like a condo plat. And so, the open space is owned and maintained by essentially a condo owner's association. Yeah, yep. And then the last one, this is one actually that our firm has done some work on. Our engineers in our firm have done some of the design on it. So, we're more familiar with this than some other examples out there. But it's called The Wilder, and it's a development in Newport that is a, you know, missing-middle-focused development. And it's a woman named Bonnie Serkin who's doing the project. And she, I know she has a very personal interest in seeing workforce housing in Newport. And so, this is somewhat of a mission-driven kind of project for her. Interesting woman, and I think an interesting case study here. The project had 34 units over about five acres. Those units range from very small to 640 square feet, up to 1,500 square feet. It's within the R2 zoning, and the price range is in the 320-ish thousand to about $500,000 for those, those units. Next slide, please, Laney. And you can see some of the, some of the product type examples here. You know, again, really focusing on open space. I know there've been a lot of struggles on this project specifically with a desire to narrow up the streets and the kinda push and pull between the fire marshal and fire code, and kinda narrowing up the streets. So, kinda the skinny, the skinny of the streets and the public infrastructure to help achieve some of those price points has been a real push and pull throughout the project. Good question. I'm sensing there's some battle scars on that issue. I was outside, blissfully ignorant on that one. Yeah, yeah. They're both in this one, so. Next slide, please. So, yeah, more details here. And, yeah, so that concludes our list of case studies. Any questions on any of that before we? That's a great, it's a great question. And in that case, it was family owned, that land was family-owned. And so, I think, I think you're smart to point that out, because I think that there was maybe some advantage on the land pricing in terms of the ability to offer some of those price points.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Do you wanna go to the next slide?
Yeah, next slide, please, Laney. So, what we're, what we've been working on, and what we will continue to work on as we work towards the next work session, is focusing on what changes need to be made in the code to look at allowing cottage clusters, and maybe loosening up the standards, or at least right-fitting the standards, I should say, to accommodate, and accommodate in the way that the commission and the city would like to see them. So, that's something that we're working on, and we'll start to delve into that a little bit tonight. So, you know, when we look at where cottage clusters are currently allowed, Don, you can weigh in on this as well, but I think it's essentially the R2 zoning and some of the more intense districts in the city. Where they're not is in the R1 and R1.5. So, we've kinda focused on that a little bit for the presentation tonight, as well as what might need to happen with your PUD ordinance to potentially also allow for cottage clusters in combination with maybe some changes to the R1 and R1.5 zones. And then, I think there's a discussion that we don't need to have tonight, but should stay on the table about how are the cottages accommodated? Is there a standalone ordinance, maybe, that speaks to some of the specific design desires to accommodate them? What types of things do you want to see in them? What don't you? And how does that get codified and structured? And then, you know, or are they folded into the PUD ordinance? And there's maybe, there are particular provisions in the PUD ordinance that clearly allow it? Or is it maybe a combination of the two? So that you don't have to necessarily automatically go down the PUD path to, you know, get the outcome that you're looking for with a cottage cluster? So, I think those are some of the considerations that we're gonna need to start to work through with the commission. Next slide, please. Here we go. So, from our first look at the R1 code, what we're seeing as potential conflicts are, one, your density in R1 is defined really by your minimum and maximum lot sizes, which are 7,000 and 10,000 square feet, which, you know, generally equates to about a four and a half unit to the acre maximum density. So, if we're looking at that, those typical density points of about nine to 10 units per acre for your cottage clusters, you know, we're looking at something considerably more dense than what would otherwise be allowed under the current zoning framework. So, something would need to, something would need to give there if we're looking to introduce cottage clusters here. Minimum width and frontage of 60 feet, often, for one, often the cottage clusters face a courtyard, not actually a street. So, there'd need to be some consideration about the orientation of those. And maybe it's not, you know, street frontage, but it's public accessway frontage, or whatever, however that gets characterized. But, you know, some discussion about what does frontage mean is an important discussion. And then, at 60 feet versus, you know, what we would more typically see, maybe 28 feet, something significantly narrower for that product type, is, you know, something I think would be important to look at if we're trying to figure out how to accommodate them. Minimum street yard of 15 to 20 feet is a requirement in the R1 zone. You know, I think there's a discussion to be had there about, is that necessary to accommodate it? It would definitely be maybe a little bit more than what some of the other courtyard, or sorry, cottage cluster projects have had. So, I think some discussion potentially about narrowing that standard might be appropriate. Minimum rear yard of 15 to 20 feet. You know, I don't know that that necessarily would need to change specifically to accommodate a cottage cluster-type product, but I think it's something that we'd wanna, wanna look at. Same thing for the 60% maximum pervious surface. I think we'd need to really kinda fine-tune that to see if that's, if that's something that might need to change, because, you know, ultimately, you're sort of trading your lot development for open space that's immediately adjacent to it. And so, there's a understood trade-off there of what is a community open space versus what might otherwise normally be absorbed into your lot as a single-family project. Next slide, please. So, R1.5, very similar in terms of where the potential conflicts might arise with a cottage cluster-type project. With a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, maximum of 6,500, that results in roughly a maximum density of about six units to the acre in the R1.5 zone. Again, if our general, if cottage clusters are generally yielding about nine units to the acre, there's, you know, 50% greater density there, so that would need to be reconciled to accommodate cottage clusters. Minimum width and frontage of 40 feet, getting a little bit closer to that sort of 28-ish feet that we might see within a cottage cluster, but not quite there. So, you know, very, very similar type conflicts with R1.5. And so, those are, those are things that we would, you know, begin to look at if we're looking at specific code changes to accommodate. Next slide, please. So, again, the things that we will be considering as we approach the next hearing, and things that we would pitch to the commission, are things like, what are the impediments that need to be? that need to be remedied? You know, how, how should we look at the minimum lot size requirement? What types of amenities should be offered? And we can talk about that in the context of some of the examples that we still have to, to run through. How do you treat the perimeter of, of the development from a screening and aesthetics standpoint? And are there additional criteria that, that we need to look at? You know, when you look at your PUD ordinance right now, there are a lot of very specific standards about open space and how that gets, you know, does it need to be connected? Right now, there are requirements that would require you to connect to offsite open space. And, and I think there, those may or may not marry up well with the cottage cluster concept where your open space is often sort of centralized around that. And so I think there's some considerations that we'd want to look at as to how a more standard cottage cluster open space arrangement might mesh or not with your, your current subdivision and PUD standards.
Could I take a pause just for a sec there? I think just maybe conceptually, the high level, we're trying to build, trying to build communities essentially, as you've seen here. I mean, that's in through a kind of a master planning lens. I think that's it. And I think we're not sure where this lands in terms of would this be an overlay on top of R1 and R1.5 as an option? Where that's an option for developers to do traditional development or there's an incentive if you do a cottage cluster? But that cottage cluster is what are, what we're trying to define is what makes that community. So it's not about jamming more lots together, just to jam more lots together, but rather have these amenities around that and, and have a community centric experience. And I think this concept is kind of taken off because of the current market situation across the entire state. I mean, it really is. This has become part of that. I think you have to clearly want to be drawn to that, you know? I mean, this is perhaps not for everybody, but I think, you know, you're living in a community style, style area that does differ from perhaps a traditional condominium kind of situation where you have more attached product. You still have fee ownership. That's super attractive to individuals now. People still want fee ownership. They want their own individual piece of property, even though they have common areas that are in common. And so from a market perspective, that seems to be something that really is where they're trying to, where people are trying to find a market niche because prices have escalated so high that, especially with the interest rates, this is, I think, becoming very appealing. So from the planning commission's perspective, we'd like to get your thoughts and we can provide more information as well. But I think what would be interesting is if those concepts that we showed are of interest, we could clearly on one level start to look at those codes that were created for those and start looking at, well, what, what made that? What does that look like in code? And that's kind of the next step here. But just high level, without diving into the minutia tonight, but just what your thoughts are on those broad brush elements that differentiate these from, from traditional developments. So just wanted to start with that.
I have a, oh, go ahead. I guess one, I like it. I think it's awesome. I have a friend that lives in one in Boise. It's beautiful. I guess one question I had, and this is just sort of an off the wall question, but can we regulate whether they're owned or rented? And the reason I came to mind, I had lunch with a friend that lives in Malala and 65% of their units now in the town, 65% are rentals. And I know cottage clusters don't really lend themselves to that, but just in general, is that something our city can regulate somehow so we don't go there?
You know, it's a challenging situation. You know, I think.
Ben does that.
Yeah, I mean, I think there would be, I think there would be something we'd obviously need to have some, you know, detailed discussions about where we're going with that because the spinoff of that becomes very challenging. What about Airbnbs? I mean, you, that whole market is kind of uncontrolled, to be honest with you largely. Some communities have tried to, you know, rein that in. I think it might be somewhat difficult to, to, you know, to do. I'm guessing Canby is perhaps less attractive as that rental market.
Right.
You know, if we're in Hood River, I'm not suggesting that we're not Hood River, but like, you know, there's a difference there. Like that's a destination for recreation, for example, that might end up.
So it might self-regulate is what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm thinking about the ones in the dowels on the gorge. You know, you drive through the gorge and there's a bunch of them on the hillside. And again, they're not exactly this tight, but I'm assuming those might be perfect Airbnbs because they're in that area. So I, I think probably largely it would self-regulate that I doubt somebody would like be doing a rental so much here and.
Oh, no. People buy houses as investment properties and rent all the time.
I would love to jump in a little bit if I could. So for those of you don't know, I'm a Realtor. I'm very tapped into our market, especially in Canby. Handful of things that I have just in my head. So one, there is such a thing when you get into these like planned communities or cottage developments, first of all, I love the idea of it because I am a first time home buyer. I just bought my home a little over a year ago, last March. And, and our home was right at 400,000. To me, that's not a first time home buyer price point. In my head, I still have it set at 250 to 350 and that's just not realistic anymore. So I know the price seems, can seem high, but that's just where we're at. And it's not, personal opinion of course, it's not going to go backwards. It's not going to go down. It's just going to keep going up. So these 400, you know, essentially 500 and under is the new first time home buyer price point. So I think that these fit that really well. In terms of rentals, you can get into it if you have any sort of HOA or things like that, there, you have the ability to set rental caps. So even if someone does want to rent out those properties, because they are an appealing price point where you could scoop it up and make it an investment property, that's what my next door neighbor did. You still could have it so only, you know, X amount percent of the community could be rented. So it's not the whole thing. You're not just having renters in there. You have homeowners, et cetera. Because those, that price point is marked in the size of the homes as well, being cottage clusters is appealing to generally speaking, first time home buyers or people who are retired and just want a smaller space to take care of. That you, of course, you have the one-off, you know, just one person living there, et cetera. It's a really manageable space, but that's not generally speaking going to be someone's forever home. So it would be a starter home or in a later in life home or a rental is, in my opinion, is what those would end up being. So having something like a rental cap written in, you know, if they do have an HOA, things like that, having that in there, I think would be a great way to kind of cap that and have some control because otherwise you don't really, I mean, you can't really have any control with that. Also, I watched the, the last meeting and there were a couple of things. So a lot of the products that were presented last time, those were way more for rent products. And I just, I just want to clarify that that's not what we're going for or is that what we're pushing for?
There's, there's a, right tonight, we're really focusing on single family.
Okay.
And single families ownership is, some of those product types and the broader discussion in the PUD, we haven't quite got to PUDs yet. The other question on PUDs is, not on cottage developments, but on more on PUDs, is should there be attached product allowed in PUDs as well? So in other words, it's not all attached, but let's say you have a mixture of medium sized, large sized lots and some attached product. That's, that's probably more what those references were about for tonight, at least on the cottage piece, we're really looking at more of the examples that were provided. And I, you know, but I think there is that discussion for when we get to PUDs about the appropriateness of having, of mixing those in.
Yeah, okay. And then just the last thing, because you had had a question about how, how does it get determined if you're putting a condo, a townhome on a lot? And just from my experience, it usually comes down to highest and best use. So if someone can put that many units on there and in their townhomes, then they'll do townhomes. Or if it makes more sense to do condos, they'll do condos. So there was a, your, it was a question from your last session. Yeah. So it's just whatever the highest and best use is essentially for the builder, for the investor. So if it makes.
For the investor, how many can they get in there?
Yeah.
It's going to be what.
And what is it allowed? Yeah. What's allowed? I know for the site we had just discussed, I think it's three was the minimum amount you could have on that size lot. So whatever the highest and best use ends up being, that kind of determines what they're putting on the property. It was just a question you had that I had a little bit.
So it's the developer, the most advantageous for the developer?
Yes.
Okay.
Generally speaking.
That would make sense.
Yeah.
Just, just curious on the rental cap, I'm not sure if there's more information on that. That would be something, is that like a horizon on that or is that, do you know, like, is that 10 years or what would that?
So every, it really comes down to the governing HOA in those, in my experience with it. So if you set it for, you know, 10 amount, 10 years or as long as the HOA is active and it can, it can be revisited or revised as time goes on. But generally speaking, it's decided by that HOA.
Okay, got it.
I would love to see the city of Canby consider making itself an HOA of sorts if we're doing it by geographical region, the north, southeast, west, where we already have our existing homeowners representation. Because I'm not thinking the right term, but we have neighborhood associations. If we turn those into homeowners associations, then we could set caps on some things and that might be worth looking at if we're, if we have. So on the cottage development front, I would love to see a bunch of single family homes that would be accessible for people who are aging or have disabilities that are super accessible, you know, have a parking that's going to be needed in our single family, single level. Like that is my ideal. But when I look at our community, half of the kids in our community qualify for free lunch. Most people are, if they're making 60 grand a year as a family, are doing good. When you bought that $400,000 house, I bought my $400,000 house, we were making more than $150,000 to qualify for that. So all these people who are making 60 grand a year, who have, you know, a family with a couple of kids, they are never going to be able to afford any of these houses. So like affordable, I'd really like to see us look at outside of cottage houses because there's only so much we can do. But when we're looking at how to grow the rental availability market and like keeping people in the community, can we look at things where we're defining affordable as what could somebody making 60 grand a year actually afford and figure out some ways to put some kind of parameters on the rental market?
One of the problems with that is that these fine people over here, their, their main point in life is to get people into ownership. And so, you know, when we think about apartment buildings, it's like, I don't see us getting past our housing problem without them. But nobody wants them and nobody wants to talk about them. But there's no getting, I mean, there's, I mean, I was just reading an article. It's like they're trying to figure out what to do with the homeless in Palm Springs right now. It's like no one is immune from the problem.
No.
And we keep trying to look other places for it. And it's, I just see it as rentals and, and, you know, and I appreciate these, but I don't see them as addressing a problem at all. And especially when you're talking about, I mean, just something that's like half the size. It's like as, as you, I mean, one of the things that I see with all of these is the amount of square feet just taking a dive for the same amount of real estate being taken up, kind of. And even though people are parsing down to smaller living environments, you know, it's like, is, are we doing it because that's what they want? Or is that, you know, like the units that I saw land before us earlier today on the project, it's like, there's a lot of space in those, you know? And, and yeah, it's a tight building, but, you know, it's kind of doing the opposite of what the cottage cluster is doing, which is separating it out and making everyone put up with a small amount. But it's like, as soon as you've got a kid or two, that's just not going to work for you anymore. And you're going to be looking for a two bedroom apartment. So, I mean, I.
Apartments are tricky though, because you look at all the apartments that have been built here in the last 10 years. They all have signs, we've got apartments, one, two and three bedroom apartments available. And they do, because the rent is so high that people can't afford them and/or they have poor credit and can't qualify to get in. So we have apartments. They're too expensive and a lot of people who need them can't get into them. And there's not really any great way to make somebody rent to somebody else. But I was thinking specifically to the high number of investment properties, like the city's always looking for ways to have revenue. Like can we do something super duper crazy? Like say, if you have anything that's not a primary home, the city charges you a very high tax fee unless you are holding rent to a level that is, you know, in line with an established metric for income that would probably be in the neighborhood of 60 grand. Like if you offer affordable housing, the city does not charge you this exorbitant tax for having a non-primary home. But if you have a non-primary home and you don't adhere to that, well then, here's this big heavy tax that would be a disincentive to have super high rent. Because part of the reason the rents are so high is because it's just a competition between developers and investors to see how much they can get. And they're like, well, it's market rate now. It's three grand for a three bedroom apartment. You know, it's not as high here for a three bedroom apartment. But I mean, it's definitely, it's like 1,800 for a two bedroom guaranteed, if not more. And that is a lot of money. Somebody making 60 grand a year, that's almost 100% of what they take home. So you need to have more adults and therefore more parking. And then it just turns into this cluster of people who can't get into housing because they don't qualify for whatever reason. And then the neighborhoods fill up with cars and a bunch of people who are like living in their cars because they don't have anywhere else to go. And it just turns into the situation that we have. And so I do love cottages. I want people to have individual homes. I'm thrilled that I managed to squeak in when the interest rates were still 3% and we were making enough and we got our house before. It ballooned and is worth 200 grand more now than it was five years ago. But for everybody else who's already outside of that, they've got kids they want to keep in school and they need a place to be, like, that's where I'm, I just wanted to throw that out there because I think for us to, if we really want to address how do we keep people in something affordable, we have to define what affordable is and figure out like more aggressive ways to like push for holding something at a specific level. Because more affordable than average, if average is 850,000, more affordable at 500 is still not at all possible for most people. Portland was like the last affordable place on the West Coast 20 years ago. It's not anymore. And it's not going to go down that much. It might go down a teensy bit, but it's not going to go down much or stay that way. So, thank you for letting me stand on my soapbox for a second, but I just wanted to throw that all out there because I want everybody to like maybe think a little bit more like, what can we do wild wise? Because like I, there's potential avenues that aren't being pursued yet that I think would be worth considering.
And I appreciate everything you're saying. I, I'm not truly sure as a commission that we can create affordable housing. I think that the discussion that we're talking about here tonight is just how, if, if, if we come up with an idea for affordable housing, how's it going to fit our code? In, in the presentation tonight, I saw that we were, we're, we're trying to change our R1, R1.5 to make this cottage cluster thing work. I personally disagree with that. We've got a solid R1, R1.5. If somebody wants to come and build a cottage, cottage cluster or whatever you want to call it, let, let's develop a code for that. What I fear is, and you see this in a lot of places where you drive around these towns and you see these great big houses, 5,000 square foot, you see it in the Portland area, and then you see a little 800 square foot house. And then you see another medium sized and then a great big one and then a little one. You think, you know what? And I think Tom McCall used to call that urban sprawl type of an environment. We have a, we've got good R1, we've got good R1.5 if somebody, that's what they want to build. If they want to build a cottage cluster thing, let's, let's develop using those foundations, let's, let's develop that. What I don't want to see the cottage cluster thing is becoming the sprawl thing in our town. I, I personally, I don't like that idea. If we have, we just don't have areas that I see that working that are within our UGB right now. So maybe we just need to come up with a cottage cluster code. If that's what they want to build, then that's what they build.
And I think part of, I mean, I hear what you're saying and I, there are actually developers that are interested in this right now in areas that have not come into the urban growth boundary, specifically in north part of. Specifically in north part of town, what's called Special Area J, near Darbo's and that where Walnut Street Extension is coming through. And very much interested in doing traditional development along with cottage development in that same concept. So they have, would have a mix of both. So there are people that are interested. The challenge is, yes, we could come up with, I mean, obviously that's the intent is to create a cottage development, but how would that apply? It would either have to apply to existing zones or we'd have to create new zones. So that's, that's the question. I mean, that's part of the question here. What we're trying to do is frame up the standards for how that would be applicable. And perhaps to your point is coming up with criteria, so perhaps those concerns. If the concern is it's not being cohesively master planned, if that's the concern, how can we build a code that actually addresses that? So in other words, if it's incompatible, you know, let's say there's an acreage threshold for how big that needs to be in order to even qualify to use the process. So you're not dealing with disjointed, small infill development, which this is not intended to do at all, but more larger pieces of land, you know? Again, maybe not as big as the plan unit development, but larger scale. So that's part of it and.
Well, I guess, I guess my, in all of these things that they showed us in the pictures, I didn't see any, what looked to me like R1, R1.5, what we call that, intermixed with these pictures that we were looking at here. To me, these all look like separate standalone areas.
They're, they're within that largely, I mean, they're either on their own or they're within another plan unit development or a master plan. And the zoning in those, that, those are probably slightly higher densities. They are probably more in the R1.5 density range. Part of like, what many jurisdictions do is they have ordinance that allows it kind of a floating overlay over the top of, you're allowed greater density if you meet certain criteria. You're building a community, you're putting in amenities. So in exchange for that, you get to have more units. That's really the concept. If you don't do that and want to build traditional lots, you don't get those incentives, you know? I mean, that's, that's really the trade-off here. The, the value for the city, I think, is we gain a whole bunch of possible homeownership. And I know it's challenging, but yes, there will be more people here. The demographics of the community benefit because you probably have younger families. They're coming in here and arguably, I understand, you know, not everybody needs a, you know, huge home to have a family. And I mean, you know, we're in a 1,500 square foot house where we live. I mean, we raised our family there. I mean, you don't need a 4,000 square foot home, you know, who's to say that that's the standard? So I think part of that is like what your expectation is, is based on, you know, your own, you know, your own needs to some degree. But I think, I think what we're trying to do is provide opportunities that don't exist now. How it gets actually implemented is, I mean, I think maybe the first thing is, are we okay with the cottage development standards for what they are? And then the second thing is where would that apply? And building criteria for that. And maybe backing up just real quickly, because I know there's a broad brush here of discussion and I'm catching some of you guys up as well who have not been part of the conversations. We have, we have some future work sessions where I think we may not have hearings. We are doing housing needs and housing production. So those target percentages about what people can afford are already available. We have demographics and all that. What we're trying to do is, these are kind of picking off, you know, low hanging fruit to meet the standard for the urban growth boundary that are fairly easy, in our opinion, to address. Easier than some of the other issues, but we will be dealing with the other issues. There's a whole set of housing production strategies. Some of the discussions Planning Commission will be involved with will range from, should there be another DAIA, for example, public-private partnership? That's where I think the city has control. I don't know how much control we can impose on, you know, rent caps, et cetera. I mean, that's, structurally, that's, that gets really complicated. But if there was another public-private partnership, that might be really good for this town, where you have another building like that, that is a rental unit, you know, kind of situation. I don't want to get aside with that. So that's for a future work session. But for tonight, the concept though, I mean, where would you think that would be appropriate? Or under what circumstances would the cottage development? I mean, if you guys like it, where should it go?
I think it's defined by the minimum number of units, really. Because it's like, I mean, how many, I mean, we already can split an R1 into two units, right? And so it's, I mean, it makes sense, I guess, the smallest cottage cluster you could have would be three. I mean, and is there enough, I mean, how much adjacent amenities would those require? You know, I mean, I, I see a PUD in a cottage cluster as just different magnitudes of the same kind of thing.
Agreed.
And so it seems like the same body of code could deal with them both. And I think the trick is just separating them off from our standard, our, you know, housing code as it is. And I think the place to start is how many units? And then you can start to define on what each one needs to be considered a complete cottage to offer. Because I think that some people, I mean, there's some really pretty, you know, I've seen some, there's some pretty big lots still inside of town that you could actually fit a fair number of these things on. But, you know, past a certain point, it's just like, oh, just make it a duplex and be done. Or just split the condo and be done. But I don't know. I mean, can you, could you see three being enough to sustain a kind of, or do you think you'd need four? So you could have a square with some central parking or a central playground?
I think it would need to be several acres at least, in my opinion. I mean, to be, for a starting point.
Yeah.
I mean, that's where, I mean, I'm not sure what you're thinking.
I was thinking that's PUD size.
Well, that's actually more, I mean, PUD is probably more on the, I think, more the 10 acre range. I mean, that's kind of what I think of, you know? I mean, that, again, these are not exact. Part of the challenge is we have R1, R1.5, and R2. R2 is not helpful. It's a multi-family zone, you know? And so like, R1.5 and R1 are essentially single-family zones. You know, they, they're not helpful to getting affordable housing, period. They just aren't. They're not really achieving what needs to be done. And I don't think they're helpful in the sense, because people are also trying to maximize the lots. They don't care about open space or anything else. They're just trying to like, you know, how many lots can we fit in? Instead of building a community with other elements that I think, you know, I think you could have, I guess my point is, you could have greater density and it might actually feel better than what's already allowed with, with everybody right next to each other.
But, yeah. Well, some of these developments were pretty small.
So would we potentially want to do something with the existing PUD structure that actually requires open green space in some way, shape, or form? That kind of lends itself to, then you could do a cottage development? And maybe have something that's some degree of overlay with some of the R1 and R2? They'll let them build more units, still make more money potentially because they've built more houses, but it's taking up the same kind of amount of space, but putting in more houses, you know, still single-family kind of way?
Yeah, and the exact, the exact, you know, density of what that, I mean, that's part of this discussion, but I, that's kind of the concept though. It would be a float, it'd be a floating, there's some discretion to this as well. We'd have to come up with a criteria. There obviously would be some discretion around it, but it would be more master plan community, you know, versus disjointed development. I mean, it would encourage, I think, more holistic, you know, planning.
Do you think green space requirements could be a way to push that?
Yeah, absolutely. Could be that they could have a common trail system or open space area. They have something that is in common. They're not just all next to each other with, you know, with, you know, a driveway between them. That's not, that's not a cottage cluster.
Do, I mean, do we want to actively discourage the single-family, you know, PUD developments though? Because I mean, do we want to actively discourage the single-family PUD developments at this point? You know, since, you know, who's that really serving at a certain point? You know, who really, do we care about there being more 5,000 square foot homes for a million dollars? Or do we want to say, you know, for anything that would be, you know, built that way, now you have to have these big green spaces, you have to have some kind of commonalities? Would it, would we get to the cottages more readily if we changed the PUD rules?
And the PUD rules are, and we haven't quite got to that in the presentation, are basically, you can float your current base zone, you can float it across your property, but you cannot increase it. And so, you know, essentially, we don't have great examples of PUDs in the city here. And the open space is probably not what ideally we would want. Where they did exist, that's not serving what I think the intent of that is.
Clarify for me what our definition of PUD is here? Because in my world, it's public utility district and that is so not what it is here.
Yeah, so it's, it's plan, you know, planning and development.
Plan something development.
You know, when you think of things, you, I mean, the traditional ones had, you know, like community assets, like a tennis court or something. Some of them may have a golf course.
Yep, yep.
But again, that's, that's historic. That's, but now I see PUDs being just something larger than a cluster, cottage cluster. So, Ryan, did you have some comments?
I was just going to say, the, the main one in town that's been processed in the past as a PUD is Hope Village.
Okay.
So it's, you know, it's a campus with varying housing types that have some shared amenities and they're on a bigger parcel.
Gotcha.
And it was planned, you know, sort of in advance, although they've modified it over time. So we don't have a lot of examples in town, but that's the main one.
So I guess the question I was asking was a little bit more to some of the larger single-family residential developments. Like would we want to consider changing the criteria for the builds of more than individual homes? Because like if you have a lot that is specifically sold completely separate from a new development, then, you know, maybe it has the traditional rules. But if you're talking about five lots or more that's proposed to be developed as single-family, then maybe we have some kind of, you know, aggressive green space rules that kind of make it make sense to go the cottage route?
And I think, you know, this could be incentive based versus mandate. I mean, this is all part of what we need to figure out. Like you could actually have options. You could have your traditional path and then you could have a carve-out in your code in that same zone saying, there's an option for cottage cluster. And this is what you have, this is what you have to meet. It obviously would go before the Planning Commission. Clearly would be a type three level review. I mean, this is like where that would be. I mean, it would be at that level.
And, and there's new state law and case law that basically says you, for housing, you have to clear an objective standards. So how a lot of the cities right now are implementing this kind of stuff, and you can probably explain this better than I can, is you, you know, a lot of cities, they have two tracks, which is kind of what you're saying, which is there's the clear and objective path and there's the more flexible, open-ended path. But then, like you're saying, you have to provide these amenities and, and provide some common benefit and things that allow you that more flexible path.
And really, I mean, I think part of it is if we're not trying to make it like, because there's also this pushback a little bit from the state, which is like if it's discretionary, it's more expensive. Well, that's not what we're pushing for. The discretionary part is hoping to have more units, so it's less expensive per unit is the concept is of this. So that's the target. And that's, again, this doesn't solve the housing issue in Canby. It solves, there's like 13 like strategies and we have any, well, I'll do a work session on just those. And I'll talk about that at the end of this discussion. But like, that will bring everybody to think, that'll be good to have that discussion because that could be broad ranging. Right now, we're trying to target it down to cottage, PUD, those are our focus.
So we're hitting the 10:00 PM hour. Where, where are we headed from here?
I think we should maybe, if, if I could, if we could, we could get through the PUD stuff possibly, because I think we can blaze through that.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
And then maybe make a stop, because you guys are getting tired. I can see it.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'm going to, I'm going to shift into auctioneer mode here as Bronson. Okay, so we do have some case studies, PUD case studies. This one that is up on the screen right now is one that Polish Homes has proposed right now in North Bend. And it's a mix of missing middle product type. You can see it's got kind of your prototypical elements of a plan unit development with open, network of open spaces that kind of weave throughout the community.
It's very Villebois.
Yes, yeah, exactly, yeah. Alley-loaded townhomes and a mix of all, of product type. And there's a product type here that they're calling cottage clusters. And Lain, if you want to go to the next slide, we've got a kind of a close-up example of it. It's not what you would typically, I guess, it's a cluster development, but it's not a typical cottage cluster in the sense that it's, or that the units are oriented around a, like a courtyard, a green courtyard, but it's more of a common sort of shared driveway area. And so I don't have all the design details here. There might be ways that you could maybe through, through pavers and, and that sort of tactic, maybe make that somewhat accessible.
And this, I think this is more like the size of the units versus being cottage cluster in terms of the example. So visualize for a moment this connecting to some sort of trail network system or open space in the back that is thematically connected to this. But this is more the size of the units. I mean, they may or may not have a common driveway. They maybe have an alley behind them, but more of a unit size issue, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Next slide, Lainey, please. So this is the, the PUD of the, those teahouse cottages that I mentioned earlier. This is the PUD that those were located in. And Monmouth and, you know, it's kind of difficult to see from this example that's up on the screen, but it involved a mix of product type. And Lainey, if you go to the next slide, you can see the, the type of development that this was really designed to encourage, which is, you know, very short setbacks, front yard setbacks, kind of neo-traditional type development with alley-loaded homes, front porches that orient to the street, very walkable. That was kind of the, the design intent with this example. And Lainey, I think you can skip a couple of slides ahead. The next are just a couple of examples of images, but nothing really to focus on. Yeah, so we can, we can stop on this one for a moment. So this is another PUD in Salem, larger, larger development. And it's in, in South Salem, kind of south of downtown. But again, another example of a PUD with kind of a large open space that, that tethers together the development, about 180 units. And Lainey, do you want to go to the next slide, please? And this one was really focused on sustainable housing, sustainable development. And I think that was really kind of the overarching theme of encouraging solar access and stormwater treatment on-site. Next slide, please, Lainey.
What's with Vunorf?
Vunorf is, it's essentially, if you think back to that, that PUD example of the common courtyard, it's, it's a curbless street that is intended by the way that it's paved to basically be kind of an open, free-for-all of, you can have, you can have vehicular access, you can also have beds and bikes. It's kind of a shared street that's curbless and intended to be very low traffic volume, but it can also be the kid, a place where your kids can, like in a, like a cul-de-sac almost, where your kids can hang out and play in a safe environment. Yep, you bet.
They're very popular in the Netherlands.
Yeah. It's a Dutch, yeah, yeah.
That explains the name.
And it's just fun to say. And so again, you know, the, this one, this project really had a focus specifically on green infrastructure, pervious pave, pervious paving, so that 90% of the runoff is being infiltrated at, at the surface essentially. Next slide, please, Lainey. And again, just a couple of, you can, you can forward again, Lainey, please. Just a couple of product type examples there that you can see. And, and so really kind of getting to the heart of some of the discussion that we just had is where, how does the PUD currently respond to product types like cottage clusters? And the, part of the challenge with the, the code right now, as Don mentioned, is that the city really requires the base zoning densities to be, there's very little flexibility within the code to modify beyond that. Within a PUD, you can get a 15% bonus if you meet certain beneficial design features. Within a PUD, you can get a 15% bonus if you meet certain beneficial design features. And there are requirements for open space and very specific requirements around that. But there's also, there are also some, some limitations to that, and it gets fairly cumbersome to, to deviate from that, you know, from that maximum density, the way that's structured right now. And so I think one of the things that we're going to look at moving forward to Commissioner Driscoll, to your, your point, is kind of, how much of a carrot versus stick do you want to look at in terms of encouraging alternative product types? And if there are certain product types, say cottage clusters, that the commission wants to look at encouraging, maybe there, there is a additional density allowance with particular open space provisions that, that are met, or particular design, or particular sustainability features and things like that. So, you know, I think that's, that's where maybe you can, it can be a win-win there, where you can get those things that you want to see more of in your developments as an incentive to get a little bit of that additional density with, with some of these alternative missing middle types. Next slide, please. So these are kind of the overarching considerations that we need to begin to, to scratch a little bit beneath the surface on. So what are the, what elements should we look at including in a PUD ordinance to allow for cottage clusters and possibly other missing middle types? Minimum standards that should apply? You know, how do, how do we look at possibly incentivizing other amenities that you want to see, similar to what we were just talking about? And if, if, say, a developer doesn't want to go down a PUD route, what might need to happen within a standard subdivision? Or is it even possible in a standard subdivision? You know, that's something that we'll need to look at. Can you do it with a standard subdivision? Does it need to go the PUD route? And if, the last one, or I'm sure there are others, but the last one that we've kind of been considering lately is, you know, what, what criteria should be used if you're going to allow for additional density to accommodate that? So what, what are the features that you would want to see in a development to, to get, get an applicant over the hump of, of being able to do that?
I think we should hold there, and.
Right on mine.
You've reached saturation.
Yep. I'm just getting blurry.
But I, I think we'll do the Highway 99, well, the Highway 99 commercial, having residential mix as part of that, as part of our July 24th meeting. This is, I think, if you have other thoughts and suggestions, I mean, please pass those along. I mean, I know we're getting late in the hour here, but I think that's enough for tonight. We will come back on the 24th, and don't want to speak for Reed here, but I think we will have more, more definition and, and I guess what, maybe it would be helpful for us to start to tease out what some of these examples look like in code and those amenities, because I think that might seed the conversation. Everything that Reed just said, I think is really dead on in terms of like, what are those to have some flexibility in our code?
So to your earlier comment today, when you and I were talking, you know, the question you wanted to ask is, are we going the right direction? Meaning, the guidance that you're giving us, I, I think we're headed, it sounds like we're headed the right direction. Everybody's had some good input. We want to just define what it means to accept a cottage cluster, is what it sounds like.
And we've not given you all the information yet with that context, but like, you know, I mean, I think this is something that is important for housing affordability in the community. How we implement this is maybe something that we can all discuss. I mean, I guess broadly, are we, you know, are we okay with like going down this path? Because I think it's something that's important for this community, and then we can figure out the details of how it applies. That would be my, my thought.
All righty.
So when is the next meeting?
July 24th, yep. And I can jump, if we want to close this out for tonight, I was going to give a brief update of upcoming.
That's the next discussion is.
What's the next one?
The 26th.
Uh, the 20, yeah, the 26th, and I can, if you want me to jump into that, Chair Elson, we'll close this out, and I can jump into the next segment.
Yep, let's do it.
So for July, I'm sorry, for June 26th, getting, for June 26th, we will be discussing the sequential comprehensive plan process. And I will not be here, but Ryan will be presenting on that. And that sequential process is a process the State Department of Land Conservation and Development has recently put into state law that allows for us to sequence the housing needs, housing production strategy in specific, in a way where those are, we're not worried about the population projections that are, what we're working on, the baseline of those, which is 2020 population projections. We're not worried about those expiring and having to redo everything all over again. And it also helps in the, if there's an appeal process to housing needs and housing production, that's a separate appeal from the urban growth boundary expansion. This will be discussed in more detail, but there's definitely some benefits. It's a fairly simple process. It also gets Calaquamaz County on board with us, along with the state, and the state is already on board with that process. So it's a way, basically, it's a work plan. Sequential sounds fancy, it's a work plan. And it's a work plan that has generic timelines on it. So Ryan, I'll go through that with you. I don't believe we have any hearing items on that date, so it'll just be a work session. And then July 10th, I think, I'd like to do another work session on housing needs and housing production to bring all you up to speed, and then we can have that whole broad ranging discussion, separate from the efficiency measures, which we will, we will yet again discuss on July 24th, and Reed will be back for that. So you'll be inundated with all this, but I think there's a lot of stuff that's happened before. Some of you, some of you have been part of that, but I, I don't think it hurts to go back through, kind of where have we been on housing? What are the demographics? What are we trying to accomplish? Because those strategies, even though we're only focusing on these three efficiency measures, which are in fact strategies as well, there's a series of other ones. And as part of our housing needs and housing production strategy, we have timelines, we'll have timelines for implementation by the state to achieve those as well. Some of them are several years out, but the, all of this stuff is going forward, you know, in terms of like, trying to both accommodate the 20-year forecast and also trying to accommodate more affordable housing collectively across the city for what's forecasted. It's not trying to, it's, it's hand in hand. We know what the population's going to be, at least forecasted, and how do we accommodate that housing and in an affordable way? That's really what this all comes down to. So that's what I have for tonight. Thank you for bearing with us, and I know that there was a lot. That first hearing was intense, so I just thank you for, yeah.
All right, well, thank you, everybody, and thank you, Reed, for coming and spending your late evening with us. We really appreciate that.
Yeah.
And we look forward to seeing you again in four weeks.
Okay.
Well, that is it. Thank you, Cambie. We are wrapped for this evening.
Thanks, guys.